And submitted the bid for the thirteen plus one passenger wheelchair school bus for sixty-one, five, seventy, and then the seventy-seven passenger school bus for eighty-nine, nine, thirteen. They actually stipulated what they omitted from the two, from those two buses, from those two buses requested. And then the van was not, nobody quoted us, submitted anything on the, on the van. Brennan looked, there is a state price page website that people go on and post and you have to do the state pricing, there's a criteria that the, or the vendors have to meet the criteria, and usually their prices are less, and Brennan will speak to that. The, there's a, the website's attached there, so Brennan intention is to go on the website to see what's available. And then on the sixteenth, the page behind it, which was after the bid was due, was due on the fifteenth, Tri-City Dodge submitted a proposal for a van. But again, it was after the bid date, and we don't know if we could get better pricing. Brennan would be able to speak to that.
So I was looking into the van more because I'd seen what we've done in the past, and we just went and bought vans in the past anywhere. So I did reach out to a couple of companies, like you can see on this one that came, however, it's only good for twenty days. So it would be something we'd have to probably look into when we get closer and we're able to purchase. But while I was doing that, I reached out to Brock and asked about purchasing, and he gave me the link to the site, and I went on it. Right now, there's vans on it, but the prices are only good till June thirtieth because they work on the same kind of year we do, and they get a new list going on July one. So I won't know if there's something on there until July one for what we are right now. If I was to purchase today, there are minivans on there for nineteen-nine, but I can't tell you that that's what it's gonna be July one. But I think it is worth us looking into and getting the paperwork on and seeing if it's something we could do on July one, if we can save money. I mean, we could, for what we're looking at, prices for a brand-new, and those are brand-new, Ralph, vans, but what we're looking on for pricing is, is a possibility we pay like half, not necessarily, but a possibility, and I think it's worth taking a possibility.
So, so based on our conversation we had last week, buying it through the state, through a state listing based on their criteria for listing it, you, you're thinking an average between twenty and thirty, and then private, going through private could be anywhere between thirty to forty.
Right.
So that there is a, there is a change, it could change, but that's what we had discussed.
And what was budgeted for the van?
Um, I think we, I had put down thirty-five, but then we did lose a little bit of money in budgeting in the Budget Committee, but there's still money actually in there from last year, 'cause, I think it was in case we bought a van this year.
And then CRF is for any transportation vehicle, whether it's a seventy-seven passenger or thirty?
It's for transportation of students. I'm pretty sure that that's what the word wording is on it, is for transportation of students. We did bring the van up in Budget Committee, they, all three of them, so.
Brennan, can you look that up and get the information?
I will look it up.
I did. It did, it's for student transportation.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for my, what do you get?
Because I didn't know the exact wording.
Thanks for making sure that we ask what exactly it is.
Yeah. I mean, if it does say that, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't be concerned about somebody saying that CRF is not for that, it's for buses only.
So, on my, I don't have it here, but on my budget report, there is the trust fund listing, and when it was established, I'll just go, I'll pull that, I'll pull that, when that was established, that annual report, and I'll get it, I'll bring it to, at the board meeting, and you'll, so you'll have it, okay?
I'd actually like a copy of that, too. I've never actually seen the exact verbiage of how it's written.
So on, on the, on the trust fund listing that I did, I put, when it was established?
Yeah.
So I got all the information, I went and looked at all the annual reports, and it's, it's a warrant article.
Yes.
It is.
So, so I'll, I'll put, but that, so for future reference, that's where to go.
That's what I was saying.
It's the annual reports on that.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I'm not, the exact verbiage, I don't know, but I do remember it was for student transportation.
Or transportation of students.
Transportation of students.
We'll, we'll confirm it.
All right.
And, um, so we did get, Brennan did get an email from, could you pronounce that?
DECO.
DECO. But they said that they weren't gonna, the email stated that they were not gonna put a bid in. But I just wanted them to be, I want everybody to be aware that we did receive an email, but they said they, they declined to bid.
The type C that's coming from Cressy has the undercoating already with that price?
Uh, the undercoating wasn't in the RFQ, yes.
Okay. Um, gas motor?
That's the thirteen, that's the type A, right?
Oh, okay. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. Cummings in the other one, on the type C?
Um, I don't know if I, I think I put that in the RFQ.
I have the RFQs here, which one are you looking for?
The C.
The what?
The type C.
C? Thirteen passenger or the seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven.
Here you go. Here's the RFQ. See, I can't prepare it.
You wanna just pass it? I have a copy of it, too.
So, what are you looking?
I just wanted to make sure that it, in the RFQ, it's, uh, say, the motor.
I put a lot in there, so.
The specs are on the page, I think.
The specs are page four and five.
Four?
That's four. And five? Yeah.
Okay, we have some, over.
What are you looking for, so I could?
The motor.
All right.
I don't see that I actually specified the kind of motor.
Can we just find out?
I will.
I mean, that, if it's CAT, if it's CAT, don't be so concerned, but it's a Mercedes.
I don't think they do CAT, I think they do the new, they do normally all of our buses that we've purchased through them are Cummings, and they have a new motor, but I will clarify it.
Typically clarified with them, or Cummins, so.
Would you be able to do that before the board meeting?
I'm gonna email Evan Rur right now and see what I get for a response, if you don't mind me on my phone.
It's good as policy. Just kidding.
That's why I said, if you don't mind me.
I think I was intending to turn my, ring her down here.
I don't see anything on motor E on the seventy-seven passenger.
No, neither did I. This was a newer format for me, and I don't think I clarified that.
Does DECO, are they the providers of the Bluebirds? Is that their bus?
Yeah, they, they do Bluebirds, and from what I hear, they're actually coming into Thomas also.
Good.
They are further away.
And we had a new seventy-seven passenger last year?
Correct.
How's that price compared to last year's purchase?
Uh, last year, I think it's right around the same. I can't be positive, 'cause I didn't think to bring that paper with me, but I, from my memory, it's right around the same.
I think you're right.
I think it was thirty-eight last year.
The seventies. And then the other thing on my, on that little memo here is that Brennan invited six vendors on April seventeenth, she actually invited six vendors to, to bid, to request a quote, and only one came back with an email, but the, yeah, those are the six that came, that she asked. Five, one, two, three, oh, sorry, five. Thank you, five.
I started two.
And I actually went back after our shoes were supposed to be in and talked to six companies on the van. But that was after the fact, and no one could guarantee a price after, so really wasn't worth them doing the work, apparently.
Well, they, they probably figured that there's so little fluctuation.
There really is, and most of them are all Dodge. It was just a matter of, you know, the company in Rochester and the company Connery.
Yep, thank you.
Or is this the meeting minutes?
So I don't know, do we need, does this need to be approved at this end, the meeting minutes from the sixteenth?
I think it should be.
This doesn't sound right.
It sounds right.
This doesn't, this isn't us, is it?
I think you have a different one in your hand, just the top looks different right away.
What do you got?
Oh, I have fifty-eight. How did I get this? Like, how do I get that?
It's not us, you're right.
Did you have fifty-eight?
That's New Durham. Not yet.
Um, I don't know where this came from.
Not New Durham?
Don't matter.
It's not ours, you're right. I'll make a motion to approve these notes with any amendments offered.
Did you print something on SAU fifty-eight? Is this the one you, Jill Leppenworth?
Oh, yeah, that's what.
She's still very confused. I'm saying.
Okay, that's why.
That's right. What, you don't need it?
If you wanted to review it.
Oh, no, I have it here. I don't know how I got that one.
Any amendments?
I don't have any.
I don't have any. All right, I'll favor those minutes.
Aye.
As amended, aye.
Aye.
Do I have to vote?
You can abstain if you want.
I'm not used to this.
Yes, it's fine.
Oh, you're on the committee, we have the, we.
Okay, yes.
Is that what we have to do?
Aye.
Someone's gotta vote, unless Ralph wants to vote on his own.
Well, you know, we could do that.
All right. So is there anything else that needs to go in front of the school board that we need to, are you gonna be at the school board meeting tonight?
I am going to be at the school board meeting tonight. I did notice that there is a mistake in my packet already. I left out the K in kindergarten.
Okay, all right.
In your, in your report?
In my report, yep, I left out the K in kindergarten, so.
So we can?
My fast typing.
I can be quiet and you can present it?
Yeah, and do you, did you happen to, did you look at what was in there already? Do you have any questions on any of it, I guess would be what I would ask. I don't know if I have my packet with me.
I do have mine, but it's out in the truck. To carry my land use, I mean, we're good.
So, at the board meeting?
Okay.
Are we gonna recommend to vote with this quote? Because we need, these buses need to get, we're already behind the eight ball.
Yeah, we got a deadline, June thirtieth, right? I mean, once the July first comes along and the money's there.
So the way Cressy's has always worked with us is as soon as we vote on it, they'll start building it with, so that they can get it in by the, hopefully the beginning of the school year. So that's the way we've done it with Cressy's, from what I know, before I became, and then last year.
That works, I mean, if it's.
They work really well with us, I mean, I'm not.
I'm sorry. I'm making it.
Spaced out.
It's okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's needed, it doesn't, it doesn't service.
Okay. I won't think.
Okay.
I'm half left.
I'm good.
I'm not all right.
What?
I said I'm half left, I'm not all right.
All right, this is yours.
We make a motion to come out?
For the record.
But I, I, I'm, you know I take minutes, I take minutes for freedom. Make a motion to come out of, um.
Aye.
I'll second Jerry's.
Yeah, sure.
All in favor?
Yes.
I'd like to call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this is the, I'm gonna go to the policy for right now, 'cause this one is gonna have a little more discussion.
I'm just gonna, just the two things I wanted to run by you, and yes, I knew you already said we were gonna do these, 'cause they're ready to go. This, I got from New Hampshire School Board Association, the ones, you probably have that as well, okay? And this one was a special policy update, and, so, admission of federal grants consists of et cetera, and then there were two, policy development primers, New Hampshire School Board, there was another thing they gave out, and these were their, these are their services, which I know obviously, policies.
Yeah, we have their policy service, which I access quite a bit, because it's, it doesn't cost us any, basically, I can log in, I can look at their policy, the recommended policy, and I can balance it against what we have in place already.
Okay.
So that's probably what I use mostly off their website.
All right, those were mine. Prep work for this.
So I'm gonna jump it a little bit, 'cause I'm gonna, I wanna wait for agenda here, but this one right here is policy IHAK, and this.
I'm getting a block rate here shortly.
Yep, yep, so this policy right here is a recommended policy, and really, what only it's been changed in here is that was according to the ed rules, that really have been adjusted somewhat, but it really is pretty simple. Take this one here as well.
Hey, Jim. All right, so these are two, two, oh, this is ours and this is the school board. Okay, perfect, that I think is a great way to look forward with all of our policies, ours, right?
Yep, so if you look at IHAK, what's recommended and what's been changed, so you can see you got one through twelve, we need on our policy, you have one through seventeen on the New Hampshire School Board recommended policy. Those are based on changes in ed rule, and those are required. So that's a pretty simple one. You can see at the bottom, it was reaffirmed in two thousand fourteen on our policy, so it's a few years back.
So does this go through twelve, each individual, so this goes through twelve? They matched personally, do they?
No, it's a slight, again, slight changes to language based on the ed rule, so they're all pretty much the same, but then you can see they just added here, you know, pursuant to the New Hampshire Constitution, like humanitarian benevolence.
And then teaching in the area of character citizenship will take place through the K through twelve. And they dropped this part?
We're practically out of there.
Just, I mean, they just, they did K through twelve, they dropped some of the middle piece. As long as everything that they have in here is included in the one through seventeen, I mean, we should be good. Has dignity, it works. Do they have nothing here? Integrity, justice, oh.
I think this, I think probably goes a little further.
Right.
You know, and probably a little more in-depth, with, you know, how I read that miniature through that.
Each individual of others of race, right to freedom, of race and gender, that one's right there. Freedom, learn freedom to achieve, that one's right there. Race creed, that one's in there. Each individual's right to personal liberties.
And you can always add to it as well, if you think there's something that's, that they've omitted, people can certainly add to that.
I don't, I just, I just wanna make sure that everything that was in here before is in here, but this is, like you say, this is more in-depth, so.
I think it just breaks it, it just breaks it down a little further and adds to a more, more detail.
The right to work, twelve's the same as seventeen, eleven, individual tolerant of another's beliefs, that's never, and problems are solved through reason. That one's in, democratic societies are based on law, based on majority vote. Great, I think they're all, they're associated to the group as well as total society, to the group as well as society, so I think they're all covered. So these are all covered, and these have additional ones?
Yep.
All right.
So then what we'll wanna do is, we'll just take the notes, see that we had the discussion, and we will note that IHAK will be the recommended.
It, it contains everything in the.
By NHSBA.
Yep. And it is more inclusive than, has everything that is already in the current policy and more.
Okay.
And, and it's up to date, and incorporates the new list of principles.
And that's what we wanted, we wanna bring all of our policies up to date, so we'll be going through that periodically anyway.
Do I keep this one?
You can keep that, sure. I have plenty of copies. So this one here, Jim, we have a copy as well, this is student discipline process.
All right, so this is the orig, this is the Wakefield one, and is there anything new in this? Can I just go over this?
Not really, there's a few changes, if you look at, separate them, okay, you've got that here. Basically, if you go through section A on the NHSBA, it really kinda just breaks down the same thing in the definitions on the top of J I C D, and the link to the school board that was, you know, revised by the board two thousand and eleven, so this one's got a little more age to it. If you look on five, number five, on the disciplinary measure, measures, I did take somewhat issue with restriction from school activity, if you wanna go down to the bottom, Jim, number five.
Yep.
Restriction from school activities means a student will attend school classes and practice, but will not participate in other school, in extracurricular activities, including competition. I wonder what you guys, in my experience, Jim, if you were, if you had a restriction of school activities, that meant practice as well, that you weren't allowed to participate in anything that was happening extracurricular. But I believe that, that's just my experience.
Maybe they were trying not to ruin the team due to one.
Yep, you know, and I, you would always use that as a learning experience as well, you, your, your efforts or your energies that got you in trouble, now I'm not just impacting you, but they're impacting your team, this is responsible, that's how I presented it. So the.
There says and practice.
Yep.
And practice, but this one said it will attend, a will attend school classes and practice, means will attend, but will not participate in extracurricular activities, including competitions. Well, if you went to practice, what difference does it make?
Again, that's, you know, I would, I would eliminate them all from attending practice if they had other, if they were restricted from school activities through their behavior. That's just typically what I would do.
You're missing the first one, disciplinary measure include that are limited to removal from classroom detention in school.
No, that's in the.
Oh, but they used that as a definition, and they didn't give it in one, I guess.
Right, so this one measure definitions are saying that, that number one is now number two, or was our number two?
Yep, forgot it. So the, all this is included.
They go a little more in-depth in regard to due process, issue a term suspension, the building principal can, this will be do anyways, author suspend for ten days, the principal shall consult the superintendent prior to issuing any suspensions. I don't think that's a necessary component, and if I have to go further, I think it's better that I don't know much about it until I have to go further. Now, as it says in here, the, that a ten-day suspension, it's not appealable, it's not appealable to the.
I'm staying on language a little bit.
It's not appealable to the superintendent, anything, but if he, he can't, this principal can't suspend for something, it would be appealable. So it has to be beyond ten days.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be real meaty.
Student discipline.
But this is, but this is, I think it always.
Jim, what can I say?
Just for the record, I didn't stop it, that's my husband broke, so he made me the parking lot.
Not even asking.
Should I, can we just catch her up a little bit?
Sorry, guys.
Sure, can we, can we, can we just wanna get first? So basically, we're going over student discipline, Jim.
Oh, it's policy.
And basically, it's just a little more in-depth again, as the policy we currently have, so it breaks it down a little further. And these are all pretty much, these, the stipulations in there are all RSA and New Hampshire ed rules. I was just going over short-term suspension, meaning up to ten days for the, the principal. In the New Hampshire School Board Association, and I'm over on page two or four of the School Board Association, Jim, process out of provided school suspension, which is letter D, the principal shall consult with the superintendent prior to issuing any suspension. I've never operated that, and that's not something I've ever done, I don't have that requirement typically. And there are also, anything beyond ten days, it can be appealed to the superintendent. Anything less than ten days cannot be, so if a parent doesn't, is upset the child, is suspended for five days or whatever, they can't appeal it to me, or you. If it goes beyond ten days, then they can. You leave it to the principal's discretion and making, making good decisions. If it went beyond ten days, if I, if Jim said it's ten days, but I really think it needs to be fifteen, or whatever, then it becomes appealable to myself, or even the school board at that, at that point.
I thought we had, is this okay to try?
Yeah, yeah.
I thought we had in place already, 'cause we've run into it a couple of times, the principal's ability to do ten days, and then the superintendent's ability to do ten days, and then it goes to the school board.
Yep, there are just some slight changes in the language in this one, so this policy, as you can see, hasn't been revised or amended since two thousand and eleven.
This one does say the principal shall consult the superintendent prior to issuing any suspension.
Which is, you wanna get rid of that, right?
I would, I would prefer to get rid of that, I don't know why.
How about at, at the principal's discretion?
You certainly can, but I don't know why you'd even have that in there. I mean, if he wants to, if he wants to consult, he's gonna consult, he's not restricted.
Right.
So you, I don't think you need to add it in there, I just don't know why, again, it's not a legal requirement that the principal consult the superintendent.
But it's a policy, so.
It's a policy.
What do you, what do you think?
So if it's, if it's something like beyond, if it's something major, totally out of the ordinary, I would typically inform Jerry that there's something on the horizon, but if it did need to be appealed, typically I give him surface level information, but if there was a fight, I don't, it's pretty standard, you're out. Don't always communicate that with Jerry, although they would, a letter does get sent home, and a letter gets sent to the SAU, so.
I made aware.
Yeah, he's made aware. Is that, is that considered consulting? I'm not.
I don't think it is.
I would say at the discretion of the principal.
I'd just get rid of him.
Okay.
I'm, again, I'm surprised it's even there. I have not, I shouldn't say not once, would not be my typical practice to contact the SAU's the principal and say, hey, I'm suspending so-and-so for two days, or an in, you know, an in-school suspension, or wherever it might be, not something I would typically do. And if you look at, you know, below that. So is that what we're talking, we gotta eliminate that?
Uh-huh.
Okay. And you taking that as a note?
Am I?
Yeah, 'cause I, you wanna, you know, if I can just have that right there, because the rest couldn't be in here.
Yep.
So, below that, and.
So, you know, this has always changed so far, right?
Yep.
All right, and I just wanna clear one other thing, we're going, the, the New Hampshire School Board Association is more in-depth and more thorough, and does contain everything that's already in ours, so we're going with this for the recommendation and altering this one.
As, and also.
Are we on, you, agree, okay.
And also, as an addition, they, they put something, they put a couple of things in, I'm gonna go with that next one here, which is a new RSA. And it's not new, but it's new to our policy, and our policy has, has not been amended since the RSA was put in place.
Yep.
So under D, and we're still in the process for out-of-school suspension, and the second paragraph in there, after the short-term suspension, says, as required by RSA one ninety-three, colon, thirteen, A, educational assignment shall be made available to a suspended pupil during the period of suspension. That is a new, that's an RSA, so when we suspend students out, we need to provide them with work, whether the classroom teacher gives them work, or in some cases, our longer term suspension, we provide a tutor.
Okay. What's the minimum suspension that requires? Okay. What's the minimum suspension that requires a tutor?
One day.
Really?
Oh, not a tutor. No, that's more if we have other circumstances. But one day, I'm sorry, misheard you. One day for any, we have to provide work for a short-term suspension.
The challenge comes when something happens at the end of the day and you don't quite have enough time to communicate with the teacher, the teacher doesn't have an opportunity to gather the work to send home that evening. So then we can try to make it available by the next day, morning, or lunch at the latest, but if there's not a person to come in and pick that up, that can...
Or send home a sibling or something. They work to make it happen. We've always worked to make it happen. There have been some times, again, where it doesn't happen that same day because it happens later in the day. And if it happens in middle school and it's after lunch, you know, the teacher doesn't have any time to set aside to do that extra work. So it ends up being typically the following day.
Alright, so we recommend that, notify that to the other board members.
This is the one that's a little...
Other than that, this pretty much is, other than updated changes, this now is, is there anything, anybody else?
No other changes that need to be made. I would like to adopt it as amended for to remove that, consulting with the superintendent. Make Jim shot a lot easier too, doesn't have to worry about using following that part of the policy.
Okay. And the rest of it actually is, has only content from Wakefield and...
And then some.
And then some.
Excellent. Okay, so we have, this is, in this around, it does require a little bit of explanation. You see, our policy is E E B B C. And then the second page is E B B C slash J L C E. And that's emergency care and first aid. So they have almost mirror images of each other with some minor changes around Narcan. So in talking with the New Hampshire School Board attorney, they did not make the proper changes when they made these, when they made E E B C and J L C E at their last update. His recommendation is to continue having both policies, even though one just has the Narcan suggestion, until NHSBA makes a change. And the reason I think that's a good idea is that if I'm not here in a year or two, for whatever reason, that when you have to make a change, we know that, when NHSBA makes a change, J L C E, we know that we have to make that change. So even though it seems a bit redundant at this point, it makes sense to keep it in there so you don't miss it.
They're with, this looks identical, except this is added in the school nurse or other designated personnel.
Alright, you're on...
Right here in the first one.
You're on...
That one, the school nurse.
So again, it's, yeah, it's, they're mirror images of each other. And the biggest issue is the Narcan. And do you want to have Narcan available in the school?
Oh.
In the event that somebody has an overdose here at school. And that's a, that's a big deal.
Is it free?
If we probably, if we put it...
Is it free to us?
I don't know that. I looked it up. I found some areas that had minimal costs. There may be something we could look into if the school would be, would be able to have a free access to us.
Does it expire quickly?
Stuff I don't know. Good question. And we don't have to make a decision on this today. I can come back to the next policy meeting with these answers about the cost and the expiration.
Have you, in recent history, had an overdose at Paul School?
No.
Have any reason to think you'd have, you'd have one in the near future?
Well, I mean, I certainly have had instances where parents have come in and I questioned whether or not they were under the influence and had to call the police.
It's more for parents than students?
I would think it would, I would hope, I say hope. If it was going to happen here, I would not want it to ever be one of our students. But if it were to happen here, my expectation would be an adult that maybe, I mean, and given that the opioid crisis here in this area isn't a small deal, I would have more concerns about adults visiting, whether they were parents or visitors or coming in for an event.
Do I have police carry that?
I couldn't tell. Good questions.
There's two, it looks like, New Hampshire School Board note to this policy because of the passage of SB 25, which adds a new statute, which deals with epinephrine?
Epinephrine.
Epinephrine, I knew it.
Yep, that's okay.
And the others, the spacers and nebulizers in the school, which is not in the, which is not in the original Wakefield policy. So I see why we do need to, why they ask you to keep those.
We are, yeah, we are going to have to make, we are going to have to address the epinephrine. I mean, that's something we, we carry anyway, as you know, in the budgeting process. We carry, we purchase two adult epinephrine pens, as well as two children's epinephrine pens. Many kids have them, but if we have it and if we don't have it and we need it. And they expire. They do expire in a year.
The emergency provided such personnel is all traditionally required by law. So that, and also that other paragraph about the school nurses designated may administer other medications in emergency situations. And the personnel must have trained by law. So the only reason the original would be kept is because...
Well, we wouldn't want to keep the original.
I thought you said we'd keep both policies.
We'd keep both, but this would be, this basically, we would take E E B C and the NHSBA recommended policy would be E E B C and J L C E. They would be the same policy. And then if you look to the very back page of that packet, you'll see J L C dash R, which is our form, that if you look at the bottom, I found that it was, I didn't know what year, who these people are. I mean, I know one of the people on here, but it was never noted as being adopted. So at one point, it was written, it was submitted into the policy book, but there's no date, so we would want to make sure that we end up putting a date on this. And you're going to be next door.
I'm sorry.
No, no, don't worry.
I'm even embarrassed that I ran in and ran out.
No, do not, don't worry. You know what? It's, we have, we have plenty of policy work to do.
Okay.
You stepping out here isn't going to mean a world of, a bit of difference to the amount of policy work we're going to have to be doing over the course of the year.
You're going to read the first run-through and then be here for the second one.
I will.
And we, you get to see your kids.
Well, I don't get to see my kids. You can't comment.
Whatever, but you get to do this.
Are we still doing school board meeting? It's...
Yes. So here's what I will do for, here's what I'm going to do in regard to policy. I'm going to make the amendments on the policies that we just gone over. I'm going to mail those to you to look at. We'll come back to the next policy meeting and determine if that's what we want to look at for, bringing for a first reading for the board. So again, this is a process, the policy stuff is a real process.
Right.
You said it in these last year. I mean, so you bring it, we read it again, we bring it to the board for a first reading, then they make some changes, we'll bring it back for another reading and...
And actually, I think you did these, these are the ones that they did last year.
These are the ones you started last year, but we never got to them.
I'm just catching up, so...
Good.
I pulled this out of my policy work book that we had, so, alright.
Boy, I'm trying. It's been that kind of day.
Jim, we're going to table everything now, I think, that we start reading now because there's more to go over. I mean, there's more for us to...
You can go without me, it's fine. I'm not going to...
Get stuff, you will.
I'm going to go over there too.
Oh, you do? Can you let me know if somebody's in the school board meeting doesn't happen because a form doesn't show up or whatever?
You can have, you can have, you can have a meeting without a form, but not make decisions.
Okay. Alright, super. So you'll be here. When that's over, I'll look in.
We'll be here.
Enjoy, enjoy it.
Yeah, I'm going to.
And Sandy will be here as well.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Hey. I would say if you could bring me up to speed on all the ones that she's done already, then we can...
I don't know, I don't know. All I know is, I'm pulling up policies that were addressed back in August that never got to the board, that were never changed or amended or anything. But we can certainly go through the policy, take a look at them, discuss, and we just will make any decisions on them.
But these, we've got three.
Yep. And they have been, they have been changed. Some parts of it, you don't have, I mean, the parts of RSA don't have to be changed. But I would just, I would go to NHSBA unless it's something that you are really opposed to. And I can come back with the answers on the Narcan, because there's good questions about the expiration dates. Police already carrying it. But I also feel like we're in a community where we know opiate use is a crisis. And, you know, I don't think we're ever going to have a kid, but, you know, we've, and it's not very often I have issues with drugs or alcohol in the building. I've not had any drugs ever in the building, but, you know...
I'm sorry. Forgot to turn it off.
So I just, while it sounds rather extreme, we have Narcan in the elementary building. We're also a community building, and we do have kids who could have access.
I'm just looking to see what's different between the first, I've got two backed up, it looks like. Maybe it's what's on the back of the second one.
What you have is...
I think I have two copies of the same thing.
I just, because I just gave you E E B C, the comparable J L C E and E E B C together. So you can take a look at each one of them and know that they are the same policy.
Okay.
They aren't different.
Want to just look two more?
Sure.
So we have two we're bringing to the board next.
Yeah, I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring you back. What I'll do is I'll bring you back. Wait, you can bring back the one we're just going to amend. This one right here is parental involvement for Title I.
Oh, this is already, got already...
Well, this was done, well, it never got here. You can see it was revised by the board. It was not revised. So what you see in the bottom is I changed Title I leader Ralph Fogg, and we would have to revise it, we would have to adopt it or revise it from the board.
But this was put together by, and it just...
Yep.
Already? Then if Jen's already looked at it and you like it, and I like what I see, I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind having the School Board Association version with it, to see if there's anything missing from this.
You have, you have them both? You, the first page is...
Oh, first one is Wakefield.
And second is NHSBA.
Alright.
So you compare the two.
Alright.
But if you look at, if you just look at them at face value, I mean, just put them side by side here, what you see here is the title was changed from Title I Parent Involvement to Title I Family and Community Engagement.
Right, which is the same as School Board.
Yep. Again, it was started, it was started, and that's how we would typically do it, kind of present to you. I'll present back to you for other policies, the strike-throughs. So when you take a look at it, you'll know what was changed before we bring it to the board.
One, two, three, four. One, Parent Involvement, Provide Coordination, School Boards and Parents. Two, Write Down and Conduct Involvement in Families. Five, they didn't have involved families. They didn't, they don't add six in the last paragraph.
Yeah, it's on the second page, on the back page.
Yep. Perfect. And I think this should be brought forward as well.
And if you look at the back page of NHSBA, you can see the reus is behind it. You know, regarding to the Every Student Succeeds Act.
Great. No, I think this should be brought forward as well.
So then we'll bring that one forward.
If there's any others that Jen looked at, then I can, then we can bring forward, that'd be great.
Yeah, let me take a look here. That's KB. I'm just going to bring that forward. Yes, it is. Okay, so again...
So parent engagement, we've got, oh, so there's only two left anyway.
Yeah, we've got a, well, we've got this one here, J F, and this is the same thing.
Oh, yep, see, they already have it ready to go.
Yeah, this one is, you know, done as well.
And did you notice anything?
And basically, this, you know, just ensures that we are following McKenney Vento, which came out of the No Child Left Behind Act, who were responsible...
Students are alone, District Liaison, homeless, transportation records, legal reference. And the second page is mission of, is that different?
It's the same thing. So again, if you separate them, you've got the Wakefield policy, you've got the New Hampshire School Board policy.
Oh, so I have two copies of the New Hampshire.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's right. Okay, I think this, they did it, they're good, I'm good.
It's already been done.
I think it should be submitted as well.
Excellent.
Jen actually has her name on it, so I think this actually worked out that we could finish this and she can make it.
This is J I C F A, which is around hazing. And the language aligns with the most recent changes to the RSA. So if you look over on, you know, the bottom, we didn't do this since, hadn't addressed this since 2011. And just by the scope of it alone, you can see it's a little more in-depth.
Oh, yeah. No, it is.
You know, so the second paragraph goes into more what likely is a, is perceived as hazing, such as an act likely perceived as a reasonable person, like the cause physical, psychomotor injury to a person.
Is this required one?
Yes, it's required. It's required, and we're also aligned with RSA. So you see at the bottom of the New Hampshire School Board...
Required by law.
Yep. It tracks the language in RSA 631:7.
You know, I would definitely present this also for a first reading and hear what everybody has to say, especially since it's, and then come back for the second.
Alright, so let me get my notes here and recap.
What did you want, you wanted a note of mine?
That's okay, cool. So we, I'm going to bring back E E B C, J L C E to revisit with the committee, because we're going to bring up those questions about the Narcan.
If we can get that on the property, right, and how much it costs.
And, and again, that part's not required. That part's not required. J I C D, we're going to make the, I'm going to amend that. I'm going to bring that back to the committee.
Oh, and you're just, you're going to eliminate the...
That part of the principal.
Principal, yep.
Character and citizenship, we said we're bringing that to first reading. Amendments. KB, Title I, that, we'll bring that back for first reading. That's the parent engagement.
Yep.
Homeless students, we'll bring that to first reading.
Yep.
And as is the hazing, first reading.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that's what we have to omit in the notes. I think Jim was able to stay from 10 past to 30, I think. You want to know, so we're...
We're good, we're good.
Then these come back, we review them. Do you want to have a list of what we're going to do for next week, next meeting?
Yeah, I will, you know, if you want, we can, I can look at what we have. I don't want to bring every one of our policies there.
No, I was just going to start from this list.
Sure, you want to start with, let's go through...
This is required by law.
Let's take page one.
Yep. Okay, perfect. And maybe we can make a copy of this for Jen.
Okay.
So she, so she knows what we started with.
I, you gave me a copy of that, so I'm just going to put that next meeting. Okay, so the next meeting, we're going to go with ACE, A D B slash G V E C. And that may be the same situation that we were talking about.
Yep.
A D C slash G V E D slash J I C G L, and I'll talk with NHSBA about why those are slash.
But yeah, I think that should be our goal, to go through all of the...
Yep, and Policy D F A. Okay.
Perfect, that's what I think, yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor.
Aye. Awesome.
Can we start it, Sandy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's like a lack of a member.
King Martin, he'll be here shortly, so King Martin registration. Public hearing?
Yeah, public hearing.
Public hearing for the expenditure of funds from Special Trust, from Special Education Trust Fund. Did you speak to her?
Marie. Marie, the special ed, the expenditure from the Special Ed Trust?
Yeah.
How much do we?
There's, there's a hundred and seven, there's approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the account at end of April.
And, I'll get to the, so if you wanna turn everybody to page Trust Fund.
Fourteen in the packet?
Actually, twenty, page twenty in the packet. And you see, two thousand and ten educating, educationally disabled children, it has one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. I'd like to make a motion to expend one hundred and seven thousand dollars for the educating, educationally disabled children and leave two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety seven, and ninety cents.
I second.
The discussion, correct?
Yep.
Can I ask a question? You opened up a public hearing, right?
Yep.
Don't you have to hold a public hearing before you go on?
Actually, actually, the item on the agenda needs to be moved and seconded before any discussion continues.
It was, I moved it, Sandy seconded it. And you'd like to close it?
No, we have to have a discussion.
You wanna discuss it, right?
Yep.
You wanna discuss it, Ralph?
Well, you can't have any agenda item discussed at all without a motion and a second to discuss the item, but that's-
But we did.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's discussed. How, how much is that gonna offset your, the debt?
Uh, okay, it's, the special ed line is currently over by, give me one second over here. Actually, no, this, four hundred and twenty-seven, this is all of the encumbered. Four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Obviously, it doesn't cover the amount that it's over in the line. We had five, I believe, and unanticipated outsourced students this year. And we, this, we knew this in September, we knew this back early in September, the Board has not been aware of this, and it's-
Do you want me to go over what we have on unanticipated costs?
Was it last meeting when you said, did you say, well, maybe I didn't hear properly, was it down to two, or was it down to from?
We are in the process of, it looks like being able to transition at least two of our high school students back to school.
But not for the remainder of this year. It's for the next, for the next budget going forward, but not this one.
What's the maximum age for the students to be sent, that the taxpayers?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
That vary, I mean, we don't educate all, all special ed students until they're twenty-one. It depends on if they're receiving a college, a high school degree, diploma. If they don't receive a diploma and they receive a certificate of completion, then they go into a post-secondary program. And Spalding has a very good post-secondary.
Also, this problem has, the Board has been aware of this problem since September. It's one of the issues that was addressed at the Budget Committee level during budget season. It has come up every meeting that Ann addresses the Board about special ed. And we have informed for quite some time, we informed the Budget Committee that this money would be used, the Budget Committee, or I believe it's the trustee of the trust, asked to advise us that it was proper to wait till the end of the season, till we actually knew if we were over or not before we withdrew money from the trust. And again, this is the end of May, and it will be needed.
And are any students that we're paying for out of district, are they over the age twenty-one?
Are they over the what?
Age of twenty-one.
No, we, no, once they turned twenty-one, they're-
So we're not paying for anybody who's aged out?
No, in fact, we don't have anyone that's aging out that is not in Spalding. I had something I was gonna say, I lost, I thought so.
My apologies.
Ask you the questions, and I'll hopefully remember it.
I have a question. The two, this number, you know, with next year's projections of reducing the number of students by two, is there, is it possible to estimate the savings on those two students?
So when I get the budget this year, I anticipated that those two students would probably be transitioning back. So I, it's a little bit of a risk, and I made the Board aware that it was a little bit of a risk, but I budgeted less than what we currently have for out-of-district students, knowing that. And we have been able to make it happen, so will there be a savings? Honestly, we have a couple of more encumbrances to close out, and then I can start looking at what our numbers look like for next year.
Okay, so this four hundred and twenty-seven thousand is not the total encumbrance for the year?
There are a couple of, so IDBA reallocated money, I don't know if you were aware of that?
No, I'm not aware of that, but I am.
There was a significant amount of monies that districts didn't spend, so the Commission of Education petitioned the federal government to try to get that money back, just about ten point nine million, I believe. And each district had a reallocation, and we got about twenty-two thousand dollars. So that will help me offset one of my lines in the budget, is twenty-two thousand. And then we have a student that graduated early, so that is, I'm just waiting to hear when the final date for that student is. So there's a few, I, I would love to tell you that there's three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of money that I can save you, but there is, there is some encumbrances that we'll be able to close out in the next month or so.
Any other question?
I have a question. So I'm looking at page, I'm looking at my page. So look at page-
Twenty-four of the packet?
Thank you. So look at page twenty-four. We still have, as of May fifteen, four hundred and eight thousand dollars encumbered. Most of that encumbrance is salve and benefits. The savings that you're talking about in the twelve-hundred line, would it decrease, would it decrease the encumbrances for salve and benefits? Because-
No.
Okay, so the majority of the four hundred thousand dollars is salve and benefits.
So where, where it will help us is under Special Ed Contracted Services. Thank you.
So, alright. We are spending an additional four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty, four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, fifty-five cents on salaries, is that what I'm hearing?
No.
No.
Of the four hundred and eight thousand dollars,
Yeah.
I looked at the majority of where that encumbrance lies. So if you look at the third, the third column where it says encumbrances, if you go all the way from the first line to basically where it says retirement, that's where the majority of the encumbrances is, it's salve and benefits. Anything below that retirement is other encumbrances that are gonna be revisited to see if there's gonna be any, any, any potential of decreasing the encumbrances. So everything above contracted services is already accounted for. There's no change, and those are actually staff members that are currently in the school district.
Okay.
So there will be no, at this point in time, we don't foresee changes in the staffing. It would be anybody below the staff.
Which is tuition private.
Seven, hundred and eight, so a hundred and eight thousand of that, under that retirement line is not, not staff in-house.
That's correct.
So I guess, um, the four twenty-seven is-
Includes everything.
It does include that four oh eight?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's correct.
Alright.
That's what we currently believe at this point in time, as of May fifteen, our current liability is for expenditures at that point in time.
So, should I interpret that as, let me just do, fifteen thousand, four hundred and, fifteen thousand, four hundred and, about fifteen thousand, five hundred of that actually goes to the, to the educating and special needs students? Above and beyond?
I'm not following you, Ralph.
Okay, so if we got four hundred and eight in the encumbrance line, and we're overdrawn by four twenty-seven, five sixteen, the four oh eight, other than a hundred and two thousand, I think it is, underneath, underneath that retirement line, it's actually another seven, so about a hundred and nine thousand dollars is not in-house. A hundred and nine thousand dollars is not in-house.
Can you explain how you're getting a hundred and nine, because I can-
Yeah, underneath the other, the retirement lines that you're saying, special ed teachers retirement, special ed support retirement, support retirement.
We haven't added it up, so I, we can't confirm that at this point.
Okay, underneath that is seventy-one forty-four, seventy-one hundred forty-four dollars, and there's twelve hundred eighteen, that's, so I add that up to approximately a hundred and nine thousand. But that's not in-house.
Okay.
Is that accurate somewhat?
So the Special Ed Contracted Services, seventy-one forty-four, that is in the deficit of thirty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
That was an addition, and I have it, it was, it's numbers that I had in, for our March meeting, if you wanna look at it again, that was for an additional, a need for an additional day of occupational therapy in the preschool, and a need for speech and language services for a student in a charter school, which we are responsible for.
So what I'm really trying to decipher is how much of this deficit is applied to the education of the students, and how much of this deficit is applied to staff contracts and stuff like that?
So the deficit that's going direct, well, the staff is going directly to the education of students with disabilities. The special ed teachers, special ed support, and ABA tutors, basically.
Okay.
The deficit in contracted services is all going to students that are within either Paul School or Spalding that are receiving occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, physical therapy, board-certified behavior analysts, and am I missing anything?
No.
I think those are the four related services that pretty much cover contracted services.
Vision services, vision?
Oh, vision, right, our vision services increased a little bit this year. And then we had an unanticipated cost of a piece of equipment that cost us five thousand dollars.
We own it out right now, so it won't cost anything in the future?
We own it out right now.
So when you look at the lines, the count number, four hundred fifty-five, six forty, and fifty-five, six forty-two, and six forty-three, that little group, that little cluster right there-
Higher out of districts.
Is a contractor out of districts. Okay, that's helping me understand a little better.
One of the things that, one of the reasons that I'm now remembering, one of the reasons that the number has increased since the last time we had this conversation is, I noticed that we didn't have the correct encumbrance for special ed services at the high school. So we went back and looked at that, and what we had done was pay those services out of regular ed, so we had to move that into special ed. That's one of the reasons that it's higher than it was the last time we had the discussion.
But those numbers that you moved from one line to the other will be seen in the line you removed it out of.
Yes.
My understanding.
Right, but the point is, we need the money from the Trust Fund to cover the expenses in the special ed line.
Right.
So, yes, those, if some are out of district, some are in district, some are for teachers, some are for English special language, there's, there's all kinds of needs, but we do need the money from the Trust.
And I'm only seeking this, I'm only asking the questions to try to avoid the same situation after next year's budget.
Well, I'm assuming that we, we, the students came to us, and by law, we need to educate all our students.
You are unanticipated with students that will move in as late as August.
And I don't know how to avoid that, I mean, somebody moves in, you are obligated by law, and they're caseworkers, and meet the demands that have been given to educate your special ed. We can't turn them down.
Budget season starts two months after August, so if we have students moving into the district in August, and budget season starts in October, we need to have that conversation.
This is, this, this was created, this budget is not the budget that this Board created. This budget is the previous Board.
Yes, we budgeted those students that moved in in September and October. Those all went into the budget process for next year.
Yep.
Right, five requests.
The ones you're aware of right now.
The ones we're aware of.
The ones we're aware of right now. If, anything from now, from the day that the budget was voted in till next budget process season, any move-ins that we get, and we are thinking that we're hearing about one, but it's not gonna be a big expense, I don't think. What we did for the budget process this coming year was we started to build in pieces within the school setting that can help us save with out-of-district costs and, and help us save with contracted services. So the Parker Program, for example, is a program that will help us maintain our most intensive elementary-level kids in our school. It's fault. If we don't have room for another student, it's fault.
And, and actually, if you're trying to get the whole picture, we were not able to get the special, not, the Special Education Trust funded through the Budget Committee last budget season, so it will be at two hundred and fifty dollars next year, as long as we're trying to bring everybody up to speed.
One thing, I believe that two of our out-of-districts will qualify for catastrophic aid, so that will be revenue that comes in next year, will apply for this July.
Through the federal program, through the federal grant?
Yes, catastrophic aid, and I apologize, because actually, they're calling it something different now. It's always been catastrophic aid, but now it's Special Education something. If you, I believe the number this year is fifty-five thousand dollars. So if you spend over fifty-five thousand dollars in special ed costs for an out-of-district placement, we'll get reimbursement. So I believe we have two that, two of our out-of-districts have three thousand dollars to play this.
Sandy, the catastrophic aid you're talking about being reimbursed for, that goes back into the general fund, right?
Yeah.
So we won't necessarily be using- So we won't necessarily be used to reduce the tax rate?
No, because what happens is, if we're not aware of it, we don't build it in the budget this coming year, so the district, school districts have to, first, they have to spend the money the previous year, so it's previous year money, and they have to justify that it's spent before they get previous year reimbursement, and then you don't see that revenue until the following year. So the revenue you're getting is for the previous year, and, so it goes through an approval process, and you don't always get a hundred percent of what is submitted. Sometimes it varies between sixty percent and seventy, and seventy-five percent, depending on what does, what's available, available to reimburse. So we, the districts do, not just this district, the districts in general do not realize the total percentage of catastrophic aid that's due, I'm still calling it catastrophic aid, that's what people are aware of it, do not realize the full amount of total cost of districts spent on that category.
Any further questions? Okay, ready to take a vote?
Yeah, you can open up to a public comment.
Oh, well, um...
He's right.
Yeah, okay, public comment, I was going to get there, on the, whether or not we should take the hundred and seven thousand dollars from the trust fund? Steve?
Um, what we've heard is, is that we had, the reason for this deficit was because we've had five out-of-district placements, is that correct? Then why is the majority of the money now being reported at four hundred and eight thousand for salary and benefits? If they're being outsourced, that would be a payment to Stratford Learning or wherever the student go, it wouldn't show as a salary and benefit expense if they're being outsourced.
Okay, point of order, I would like you to address the board, and not Anne specifically.
Uh, that's what I'm doing, okay, so...
Anne, do you want to answer the question?
Well, the unanticipated cost that we've had this year in salary and benefits was two ADA tutors, one paraprofessional, and they off, uh, three of those physicians took benefits.
Does that, does that answer your question?
No, because, once again, we've been always told that the reason for the deficit is that we had five students that were outsourced out of district. If they're outsourced out of district, that should not show as, on the salary and benefit line.
Okay, thank you.
Because you're paying, excuse me!
Excuse me?
Oh, yeah, point of order, when I'm speaking, you're listening, thank you very much. It goes both ways, okay? So when you're outsourcing five students, you're paying whoever it is, Stratford Learning, wherever the child is being sent out of district to. So that shouldn't show up on your salary and benefits line, if they're being outsourced.
I don't believe that it does show on your salary and benefits line.
We were just told that if the salary and benefits come up to four hundred and eight thousand, the deficit?
I don't think that was.
Right?
I, I don't believe so. I can tell you, the unanticipated out-of-district cost was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. The unanticipated ADA tutors were a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. The one paraprofessional salary and benefits that was unanticipated came to twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. The additional day of occupational therapy is eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. The additional speech and language services was four thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. The unanticipated piece of equipment was five thousand dollars. My numbers that I have of unanticipated costs were three hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
How come Marie just told Mr. Varg that it come up to four hundred and eight thousand?
Direct it to the board, please.
Ralph?
Um, so the, it looks like the tuition going out of the district totals a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents, and on those three lines, tuition private, elementary, middle school, and high school. And I think this, that was, what I was trying to clarify was, what's, what's being spent out of district, and what is separate in that four oh eight? So really, the...
We're looking...
Yeah, Marie?
Okay, so, we're looking at two different lines, two different columns. The four oh eight is what's been encumbered, that has not been spent yet.
Right.
And the one, the number that you're looking at is amount remaining, which includes the encumbrance line. So what the, what the amount remaining is, um, what was, what was, what was budgeted, what we spent to date, and what we anticipate is going to cost the remainder of the year, that's the encumbrance line. So the remainder is in the amount remaining. So the incumbences is just obligations that we haven't paid out yet, we haven't been invoiced yet, but it's, it's for anticipated services that, um, we anticipate to pay. And my point was, the four hundred and eight thousand dollars is the majority of the four hundred and eight thousand dollars of incumbences now, what we're obligated to, or for staff that are providing services in-house. That was my point. It wasn't about what was remaining, it was of the four hundred and eight that, right now, we're obligated, that we believe we're obligated to. The majority of that is in-house salary and benefits. The one below that is obligations we believe we have for students that are being serviced outside the district. That's the encumbrance line. So, I, I just want to make it clear, so we're not talking about the same thing, the amount remaining is why we're over by four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, because we spent more, or anticipate to spend more than what was budgeted.
I believe I understand that.
Okay.
So when I take the, what isn't in-house, it's already been described as the tuition private in three different areas, elementary, middle school, and high school.
It's out of district, not in-house.
Right, and I think that's what Steve is saying, if it's not in-house, because what was presented was five students and their services, you know, I mean, I, my thought process, kind of like Steve's, thinking that all of that's going out of the school district.
No, in March, what was presented was exactly what I just read off.
Okay, so out of, so...
So it wasn't just the unanticipated out-of-district costs.
Okay, so the, the bottom line, amount remaining, we're in deficit, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five sixteen, but if, if I'm looking at the amount in deficit, amount remaining, that final column, for those three private tuition places, out-of-district placements, am I misinterpreting out-of-district placement by assigning those three lines to that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that totals a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-six cents.
All right, um, basically, regardless of whether it's in-house or not in-house, we are over by four hundred and, approximately four hundred and twenty-seven, whether it's in-house or not in-house. We have established that there is some in-house, and there is some not in-house. Either way, the special ed children needed the education here in Wakefield, and Anne Kepler provided it, as well with the rest of the school, as is needed and as is required by law. Ralph?
Uh, so, um, are we short-staffed where any of these out-of-district placements, it's impossible to bring them back in, is, are we short on the staff to, to cover those students?
No, the students that are able to go into a less restrictive environment, like Spalding, are able to do that because they're ready to go into a less restrictive environment.
Okay.
We only have two, uh, there's a little, we're getting really close to talking about stuff that's confidential.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I'm just curious if, out of that one ninety-seven, I mean, I don't know if it means more staffing here, I mean, I, I just, I don't know if there's, I guess the question should be, is it cost-effective to have out-of-district placements? That's my question.
I mean, you're talking about services that we're not, many times not able to provide just through the services that are required.
Okay.
Would that be accurate, Anne? And so I think it's always the goal to keep students in philosophically in our own home school. You know, I really, when we talk about all means all, and we want to educate all of our students, it, it, it's bothersome to me that we haven't sent any students out of district, but when I see some of the needs that students might have, I know that we can't provide them adequately here. So there is a requirement to send them out, as much as I'd love to keep all of the students in Wakefield, in the Wakefield School District. That's not, that's just not a choice at times.
Correct.
Without having, I mean...
Breaking it down by Paul School and Spalding would be really very close to the line of reaching confidentiality about kids.
Any further questions?
Yep. So what is, so if, what was the cost of the out-of-district, then?
I believe Ralph said that was, um...
The one ninety-seven, oh, nine, four, I believe.
No, that's over, that's, that's what was...
Oh, okay, that's right.
Doesn't matter.
That's the deficit number, Steve. If you got out-of-district placement.
Without having, it's a little difficult to try to follow on when you don't have all the numbers like some of the other people are sitting at the table have. Like I said before, before Mr. Varg and other people so rudely interrupted me, was that it was reported that the, the deficit was caused by five out-of-district placements, four hundred and eight thousand was a direct result of salary and benefits. So if now you're saying, well, that's, what was the cost of the out-of-district placements, because apparently that's a different one.
I will have to bring that number back to you, Steve, because I don't have my budget book in front of me, it is, it was all clearly laid out in the budget process, to the budget committee.
Thank you.
And I have that in my binder, but I don't have it with me.
All right, that being said, um, what, can, can I ask why, because we've gone through this process before. A number of years ago, we were sending children out of district, and then we came back and we were bringing the children back into district, because it is a lot cheaper. If it can be handled within district, to do it within district. Is there a reason, or is it just that it's just easier on the staff to just find them out to someone else and...
Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
Excuse me, I'm not there.
No, no, you're not able to speak to board or my administration like that, it is not to...
I'm not talking to anyone!
Thank you.
Just sit there and be...
No.
Yeah, you will. Why are the children being found, is it just easy to find them out? Is that the process now?
Point of order.
Because we've gone, we've gone through this before.
Point of order.
And the public has a right to know.
Point of order.
This is going to be asked next month, in June, at the budget committee.
Okay.
This is, and now we, we should probably look at a forensic audit.
Thank you for sharing that.
Well, I'm not finished yet.
This discussion is over.
No, it's not. Point of order!
Point of order.
I have another question, and because you people keep interrupting me, this is, this is why you have a public hearing, so the public can ask questions. And why wasn't this used at the beginning of the year like it was designed for?
Steve, you're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
Yes, you are.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
I would like to answer that question.
Okay. I'm uncomfortable.
So mid, probably, October, I went to Dr. Tyree and said, should we access the special ed trust fund, we're going to be in deficit. She said, no. When you spoke of it a couple of months ago at a board meeting, I consulted with Howie, and Howie also said that I was correct, and Dr. Tyree was correct, and waiting until we had a better idea of our final numbers, and that's why it's coming tonight.
But if you already know you're hundreds of thousands of dollars over a hundred, the whole idea of that, and why that was set up, because I was there when it was set up, so you're not one, using money out of the operating budget. It was to help so you wouldn't have to use the money out of the operating budget. You'd be able to use that to supplement so you wouldn't be spending down the operating budget. That's the way it was always intended, that's the way it was always discussed, so...
Thank you for sharing that, public comment is over. Thank you for sharing, public comment is over.
As the way it was intended, I don't know, but...
Thank you for sharing.
We will get to the bottom of it.
Public comment is over, okay. Thank you for sharing, thank you for your comments.
Have all these speakers prepare for next month, with the budget committee.
Ralph, and then this is the last.
I don't understand why we'd have a public hearing and you shut down public comment.
Um, I think that it was point of order, I'm uncomfortable, I think Anne has answered all of his questions, you have answered your questions, it doesn't matter if it's in-house, out-of-house, we have known that we have, this board has known the situation since September, and Anne has kept us apprised of the position all the way along, she has let the budget committee know all the way along, and worked very, very hard the entire season, and I believe that the board and the administration should be spoken to with respect, and not like they are stupid. So thank you very much, Ralph, for sharing that. Last question.
It's not a question, really, it's a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars, more money that's been spent than has been budgeted.
Okay, so...
If that answers anything at all.
Regardless, we are way over in it, whether it's in-house, outhouse, regardless of the number, Anne has done an outstanding job with a very, very difficult year, outstanding, and I do not wish to see her spoken to that way again, it's a public meeting with respect.
I didn't have anything to say at the end.
Standing? You're done, thank you.
No, you're done.
My comment is that we're here to discuss whether or not we're going to remove a hundred and seven thousand dollars from the educating, educating educationally disabled children. That fund is to be used when we go, when the twelve hundred function is in a deficit. We are in a deficit, that's the only reason why we're here for this, for this portion for the public hearing, that's my comment.
Jen, the nomination has been to withdraw a hundred and seven thousand dollars of the one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents from the educationally disabled children, leaving two hundred and fifty dollars to keep it open, and ninety cents to keep it open. Sandy has seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
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 For, did you get that? Thank you.
Could you clarify whether that...
There's something I'd like to say, go ahead.
Could you clarify whether that was a nomination or a motion?
It's a motion, we made a motion.
All right, thank you.
Um, there is something I'd like to say, that we are, all the board members have received a copy of their B E D H, actually, I might have to see my right hand. B E D D and B E T D H, mostly what I want to address right now at this point in time is B E D D, which is the Board Naining and Rules, Procedure of Order, and basically the board, um... B E D H, particip, public participation at board meetings, this is a policy where Priscilla Colbath was the chairperson, and Judith Nason, Lizbeth Olimpio, Vivian Macedo, Macedo, and Stephen Brown were members. Time will be set aside at the beginning of the meeting and prior to the start of non-public for public comment. Individuals desiring to speak should give their name, address, group, if any. Members of the public may offer comments on agenda items only, the board will not entertain comments on items that do not appear on the agenda. Requests to address the board on matters not on the agenda must be presented to the superintendent, and must be set for specifics of the subject to be addressed when appropriate. The board may place such requests on the agenda. Presentation should be brief as possible, written remarks are encouraged, speakers may offer comments on school operations programs, concern them in public session, however, the board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the school system. Other channels are provided for board consideration and deposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals which should be referred to by the superintendent for appropriate action. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent student statements will be considered out of order and not tolerated, the board... The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow the rule. Of order, the board vests and its chairman and other presiding officer authority to terminate the remarks of any individuals when they do not adhere to the rules established above as to content or time or limitation. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently in individuals and official matters. Thus, questions may be directed to individual board members, but answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board. So my point of reading this this evening is that public comment, public comment is on the agenda this evening, and we will limit it to three minutes. Ralph?
Since I've rejoined the board, it seems to me that every meeting we violated this policy.
Correct.
Even on tonight's agenda, you're asking for a non-public session, if required, to be held before the public comments. That's quite contrary to the policy you're trying to enforce.
Actually, it is. I actually wish I had said it before the public hearing, but I'm sticking to the agenda, which is also something I'm supposed to do. But I also asked the superintendent to please pull out the policy on board meetings. Any, anybody else? Somebody else gets to speak first before you get to speak two times?
I understand.
Sandy? Jen? Ralph?
So, we had a discussion at one board meeting where I was under the understanding that we were going to be moving any non-public to the bottom of the agenda, so that we could comply with the policy. And not only that, we wouldn't convene a meeting, call a non-public, take a half hour, hour, go in and discuss whatever board members want to discuss. So, I mean, again, again, I would ask the chair to consider placing this non-public session, if required, as stated. If there is a non-public session to be had at tonight's meeting, may we please, move it down under the Part Twelve, and have non-public at the end of the meeting.
All right. I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. There is no public comment this evening. I mean, I'm sorry, no non-public this evening. Consent agenda. I reviewed the manifest, and Sandy, I believe you did. And there are any questions? Comments? Ralph?
Should we make a motion first?
Oh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Ralph?
I think we could, all of a sudden we get fast-forwarded here. So, public comment, number five, part of the agenda, is null and void now?
You know what? You're absolutely right. I did, I'm, this is, this is-
Take a deep breath.
Well, yes, you're right. You are correct. And I'm very sorry, ladies, if you have anything you would like to address to the agenda? No? Steve?
I, I-
You do.
Because of the policies that are here under the public comment, I mean, we've got them in our packet, and-
I made copies for everybody.
Okay, so, I mean, I, is that the only opportunity on the agenda that, under a public comment, that we're going to address?
These are not, we're not reviewing policies. They're just how we're governing the meeting. These are not policies we're reviewing here this evening. We're just using them. They're just being used as reference.
Well, let's, I mean, we should address them.
Okay, but in it, but they, that is not their purpose for here this evening. It is just to address the meeting, why it's being run this way. It's just a reference. But if you would like to add that to the policy committee, they will review those if you'd like.
Well, I mean, I see some, some serious problems, because if, if we go into non-public and we do a roll call, and two members can pass a vote, then at the last non-public meeting, we have two members voting the affirmative for a motion, and violating the policy again, huh?
Okay, so you would like to add B E D D and B E D H to the policy committee?
Absolutely.
All right. Add that to it, Jerry?
Got it.
Okay. Ready for the consent agenda? Everybody else? Consent agenda, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
One against.
Meeting minutes.
Yep. Meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of May seventh, two thousand nineteen, with any amendments offered.
I second.
On the May seventh public meeting, under consent agenda, we never voted for consent agenda at all. I didn't see that we approved the consent agenda. All we did was do it for the minutes.
Page nine. Page nine. Wait. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Then the motion was withdrawn.
That was withdrawn, right.
And it said, Mr. Fogg suggested separating the minutes from the meeting agenda. Mrs. Colbath made a motion to separate the minutes from the consent agenda, seconded by Mrs. Johnson. Corrections were amended. Mr. Fogg made a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of April sixteenth as amended, and seconded by Mr. and Mrs. Colbath. Members voted four, zero to one. But there doesn't say anything about the consent agenda, the manifest being approved.
Ralph?
I think that's an accurate account, except for after the word, the words and number April sixteenth, my motion was with any amendments offered. So, no, I don't believe the consent agenda was approved at the last meeting.
The options are, we can review the minutes that were, the notes that were taken, or we can, you can retake the vote. The record's her end, so we can review that, or you can just vote on it today.
Let's see. I'm going to make a motions for discussion. I'm going to make a motion to vote on the consent agenda of last meeting. I see you should-
One motion at a ti, on the table at a time.
All right.
So, let's just get through the minutes, and then we can go revisit the subject.
Right, right, right. All in favor?
Of the minutes?
Yes.
No, I was a-
The motion on the table.
The motion on the table is regarding the consent, the consent agenda, that's correct.
But it's the consenting member on the Wakefield Board.
Actually, we already took a vote on that, and it was, it was three to one.
It's just, I was making the motion, a comment about, about consent agenda, and this minutes, for the minutes for this meeting was not included.
You're right.
How to adjust that.
But the motion on the table is to-
We already voted on the consent agenda.
That's correct.
But now we have one for the minutes.
Yes.
Oh, holy. So, the motion on the table is to approve the minutes from May seventh, non-public and public, with any amendments offered. That's the action that we need to take before we discuss the last meeting's consent agenda.
All in favor?
Are we all done making any amendments? Aye.
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 Going to discuss that last meeting's consent agenda?
Or discussion, make the motion to approve last meeting's agenda.
I'll second it for discussion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am opposed.
Okay.
Was it a nay?
No, it was a nay. Reports. Business administrators.
I have a gold workshop.
Oh, gold workshops? Oh, I thought there were minutes that were approved. Oh, the gold workshops. Make a motion to approve the gold workshop minutes of May fourteenth. I'll second.
What page is that?
I don't see it. The gold workshop minutes? I don't see them here. I don't see, I do not see them.
Can I have a discussion? Can you ask one? Is that legal? Because I just wonder. I can't ask who asked it, right?
I withdraw the motion to approve the workshop, May fourteenth.
Where are they?
They're, they've been getting approved, so.
Oh. Can we do that, approving without having to-
I'm making a motion to withdraw the, the motion for the approval of the workshop minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ralph?
The motion's off the table, there's no sense in calling a vote, but that's all. I'll vote the affirmative.
Business administrator's report.
Page fourteen is my memo. The standard report on the status of the food service participation, as well as the negative balance as of the fifteenth. There was a typo error, and it says, May one fifty-nine. It should be May fifteenth. Again, this, the negative balances is something that we're going to look forward to address as of July first, since there's been, since the balances are in question of where they stand as of the beginning of the year. So, commitment is to, as of July first, to really look at the balances, because at that point in time, we have a system in place that is currently working and moving forward. On, in April, we asked to withdraw twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents from the building repair, maintenance, and equipment for the S, for the new SAU Office Trust Fund, to the general ledger for the new SAU server and computer equipment. The board had, there was a public hearing held not to spend more than twenty-five thousand dollars. The report that's in your packet reflects what the balance is in that trust fund. Currently, there's four thousand, three oh eight, twenty-seven. That includes the withdrawal of twenty-four thousand dollars. Also in your packet is the financials report of where we stand as of May fifteenth, and we have some discussion prior to that, prior to this report. And if somebody wants to-
What page is financial report, right after the?
Page, it starts on page twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Karen Marie?
Got one clicking up here somewhere, but I can't figure it out.
Actually, I have a comment. I know that we started off the eleven-hundred line under budgeted for health insurance by eighty thousand dollars, and the tuition was off by fifty, and we only are forty-nine thousand over. It's an improvement, obviously.
You could, on page twenty-three, you could actually see in the map on the meeting chart, all the pluses and negatives. And all the pluses and negatives is a reflection of the forty-nine thousand. You could see that in the health line, we are, we were over-budgeted by ninety thousand dollars, and everybody is aware of that scenario.
Under budget, yeah.
But there is some savings, you know, you look at the net effect of salaries, there's approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of savings, maybe thirty thousand dollars of savings between salaries and benefits. So that's where, again, that's the first page, the summary of each object, and then behind it is a supporting document that shows every line, and how we tie back to those exact numbers that resemble the summary sheet. So summary sheet, you can refer back to every page and see where those numbers are being generated from, and which items have been caused the plus and minus. I made notes to certain things and kind of checked off where items that were affected that, that specific function line, but it's very self-explanatory. Again, that's, people have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I noticed the E-Rate's back in.
Yes, the superintendent will speak to it.
Yeah, we are, I'm in the process of, after several attempts, attempting to contact the owner and founder of E-Rate Strategies, who we've been working with all year. Unfortunately, I have not had a whole lot of contact with that person, despite numerous phone calls and numerous emails. It's very challenging to get a response back. To this point, I've contacted USAC, who's the governing authority for the E-Rate money, and contacted them to see if I can individually finalize this without the consultant's assistance, because it seems to be short in coming. But I will be, continue to reach out to the E-Rate Strategies company, and I will still stay in touch with USAC to ensure that our E-Rate monies do come in.
Thanks.
About thirty thousand dollars.
I remember hiring them. Too bad. Any other questions for the business administrator's report? Ann?
I can just speak to the Medicaid reimbursement. I, we probably will see some uninvestigated revenue from that. We received a report from MSB, which is our billing company, in March, and we corrected some issues with the computerized program, and we've been seeing larger checks come in, Josh, again, and we'll see a little bit of anticipated revenue from that.
Ralph?
So, the Medicaid you're speaking of, that's health insurance? No?
It's reimbursed, it's billable services, so related services, any service that a student gets, that, mostly related services. And we have assistance, which is a paraprofessional that's working with a student because of a medical need.
Okay.
If those students, we're not allowed to know, the students are, have state insurance, but there's a system in place that we bill for all of our students with related services. And the billing company knows who, who has state insurance, and that's how we get reimbursement.
So there's no reimbursement from private insurance? Like, so if someone has Blue Cross and they're insured, why would there not be any coverage for that if there's through the state insurances?
By law, we're not allowed to ask.
But could we, oh, because we can't bill every insurance company out there, huh? We could try. Can they volunteer that information?
I can't think of, I think that state insurance covers much more in terms of a related service or a medical need of sorts in a school than in an insurance company, so.
Yes, but if they didn't have it and they, they were covered, would that be something that parents could be, just let to know that they could offer up that information in case we could get something back for it?
By law, we're not supposed to bring up private health insurance to parents. I don't know if that helps you answer the question.
Ralph?
Is it safe to say that, that the overage on the, the health insurance, that eighty, ninety thousand dollars, whatever it was, if this governing body knew prior to insurance plans being upgraded, would we be able to properly budget? You know, I mean, if we're, if we're out of the loop of how many greens or reds or yellows, or, I mean, isn't it easier to budget appropriately when we know exactly how many different healthcare packages are?
Actually, Ralph, if you don't mind, I'll fill you in on this particular situation. This has nothing to do with the policy itself. They were always family plans. Unfortunately-
Unfortunately, the Excel sheet that totaled up all of the family plans for those employees missed the first four boxes, the first four cells. It was simply left off the bottom total. Has nothing to do with the policy, no policies have changed. There's no red, there's no yellow, there's family or single. And it would have been much easier if they happened to be singles, but four Excel spreadsheet cells were missed in the total creation of last year's budget.
Sandy?
Point of order, how this relates to Medicaid?
Doesn't.
It, it's off topic.
It isn't a Medicaid issue. This is a health premiums that were just simply missed in the total addition of creating last year's budget by, by a cell sheet, by an Excel spreadsheet.
So that led, lends credence to my question. If we're, if the board, if the governing body is fully aware of what we have to budget for, which we apparently weren't, those four boxes missed, would we be in deficit spending on those lines?
Point of order, this is not a budget that this board created. This, these four lines were missed last year in creating the budget. Simply, the previous administration simply missed four lines of healthcare.
I think my, my question's too simple, I guess, I don't know.
We, we knew this in September.
Question, if the board is fully aware of all of the health plans we need to cover, could we properly budget in the future?
We did. We, this, this board, this board budgeted correctly for next year. We had nothing to do with this year, so.
Well, can I, can I?
Marie?
So, when we create the budget, it's based on personnel and the, and the benefit package that they're receiving at that point in time. There are, there is turnover in staff. And this could, this could create, be created as well, because this change in personnel and people had different plans at the time. So, yes, there was, and we know the reason why, it was, you know, what occurred to make it a deficit. But it could also happen that we planned appropriately with the staff that was in place at the time the budget was prepared, and then due to change in personnel, we may be in the same scenario, because the plans that people left were a different value within the plans of staff currently here.
It's not impossible to have us fully informed to make proper decisions.
Most of the time, we, that's the way we could dig going forward. That's how we planned it in going forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Principals' report.
It's on page fifty. Over April vacation, I visited Hanson Elementary School in Lebanon, Maine. The purpose behind the visit was to observe and discuss their student support center and meet with their behavior inclusionists. The visit was very informative and has prompted discussion around how we could emulate a similar model at Paul School. I visited the school with Amy Wentworth Godfrey and Ann Kevler. And after our initial visit, we sent a second cohort of Melissa Cattaro, Ken Kewell and Mike Treader. Jen, Joe and I visited Milton Elementary to view the physical layout of their partner program. It was a nice opportunity to get perspective on what the layout could look like in Paul School. And they were able to let us know what went well and what challenges they had, challenges they had with their program. We also visited their comming class, and it's the Milton version of Lebanon Student Support Center. So, we're, I just spoke to this at our kindergarten information night across the hall, but there's this culture of, if there's an issue, suspend. If there's an issue, suspend. If there's an issue, suspend. And to a degree, I, I feel comfortable with that. But we're seeing over time, the kids that are getting suspended, their improved, their behavior is not a hundred percent of the time improving. So, what we can do is change what we're doing a little bit to change the model and change our, our focus. So when we don't know how to do math, we teach math. When we don't know, when students don't know how to read, we teach reading. When students don't know how to behave, typically what we've done in the past is give them a consequence. What we want to do is teach these students how to behave. So, in Lebanon, they have almost like a therapeutic classroom, so that students are taught how to recognize when they're escalating and tools to go to to get themselves from escalation back into a ready-to-learn mode. And they know they have a safe space to go and an adult that they can rely on in that space. So, that's what Lebanon had. Milton had a version without, without really teaching the strategies in there. They just had a room where students knew they could go before they escalated and got into trouble. They could go, calm down, de-escalate, go back to class. Because we want kids in class, that's where they do the bulk of their learning. But when they're in class, we want them on task.
Questions now or at the end?
Um, yeah.
Jen?
If you're planning on doing this here, first, I like when you suspend people, because I think that it takes the people who are acting up away from the kids who are trying to learn. So there's a benefit to that. Not, not everything that happens to a kid has to be to their benefit. It has to benefit everyone here. And I want you to be very careful that this isn't perceived by everybody else as rewarding bad behavior, because everybody wants to get out of class. And it's a specific class that they have, you know, the IAs, what do you call them? Everyone's gonna want to go to the calm down class to get out of class, you know? And so there's gonna have to be strict rules with that, but it also can't be a reward. It just, it's not okay to reward kids for acting badly.
Okay, Jen, you want to let him finish?
Don't, I, I raised my hand and asked a question, and I'm asking the question. So, is there a danger of it being a reward?
Yeah. So it's definitely, there needs to be clear parameters, so it's not, uh, a get myself out of a class I don't want to be part of zone.
You're not gonna do that.
But, but what, but what we do have to ask ourselves is, why do they want to get out of that zone? And what does this new space provide them? That we could then communicate with that teacher to then attempt to provide that in their class? So it's, and we also, while they're there, we're teaching them. So before they escalate, before there's an issue, before we have to suspend, because there will still be times where we need to suspend a kid. If you're physical, you're out, it's non-negotiable. But before they get to that level where I can't, I can't process, I just need to react, we need to teach skills to get them back into a place where they're not there or they have a place to go before they get there and get suspended. But that will be, that, that will be a challenge for us, for sure, because it's not, it's, it's a bit of a paradigm shift.
May I?
Sandy have a question?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Sandy, watch out here.
We had something similar here years ago when I worked here. And then we stopped it. So, I would like you to see, to talk with people that we, that knew the program we had, what, what worked with it, why it wasn't working, I think, to go forward. Because we had tried something similar years ago.
So we did, I, I have some research on that, and what it was called, the Student Support Center. But that was, like, you're not listening in class, go to the Student Support Center, and it was almost punitive. It wasn't, you weren't necessarily learning. I guess you were given a consequence for your behavior, but you weren't taught how to, how to appropriately de-escalate yourself so that you could stay in the classroom before you needed to be asked to leave.
Is this gonna be choice? The kid gets to say, I need to go to the de-escalation room? Or is the teacher gonna send them?
Logistics that need to be worked out.
And where are you gonna locate this in a, in a school that's full, so full we can't have enough classrooms?
Still needs to be worked out.
So, the program you're talking about that was here before, and I came just at the end of that. And it really was, it was more, there were some games in there, and it was really not done to, with the efforts of teaching the skills. It was more calming it down at that point and re, you know, reintroducing the child to the classroom. So what Jim's talking about is more in the area of social, emotional learning. So, you know, when you're talking about, Jim, you're talking about kids who are escalating and causing disruption in the classroom. Really, what we're looking at here is not so much what the child's doing, but what's driving it. You're talking about, again, and you've heard Anne talk quite a bit about the social, emotional learning. And the number of kids that we have here in the building who have experienced some level of trauma very recently, whether it's through parents who are actively using drugs and alcohol, who are being arrested, who are having some kind of physical trauma in the home, that there's not enough. I'm really trying to figure out what's driving that motor, rather than just reacting in a punitive way. And I, and I get it, it's disruptive, but it takes that student out of the learning capacity as well. So when we're looking to increase the, the overall student achievement, we have to look overall. And I get what you're saying, I don't want to have students in the classroom that are disruptive, and that's what Jim's talking about, finding a way to help teach them, identifying those students, help teach them better ways of coping and managing, so that we can reach all students.
But the way this is sounds is if you, let's just pull a class out of the hat, you hate English.
Sure.
Must they keep you from acting up, to get sent to the, you know? Uh, I'm sorry.
It was okay. We're sorry. TM or Cornalini, any kind of efforts to, to show these kids inner peace and stuff like that? Is there any opportunities where teachers and staff are showing the kids how to, um, peace out? You know, kind of like what's, what's good for their soul, is good for their classroom, kind of stuff?
I'm, I'm not familiar with those particular folks, but that would be part of the behavioral, behavioral inclusionist. So, if that's what you need, is a little bit of calming music or some energy, why don't we offer that to these students who need it? And it's not, Jen, it's only, it only gets you out of, it's not a go to this class and throw the football. It's go to this class, get academic support from the behavioral inclusionist who's in there, and get some education around why you're feeling the way you are and what strategies you could implement to keep yourself from getting to that place.
So I think that how they get there, though, is going to be key.
Yeah.
You know, how you put them there. And is this going to be someone else that needs to be hired?
No.
Does somebody have on staff already?
Anne, you had your hand raised?
Yes, mindfulness needs to be taught in schools these days. There is a significant increase of children, not just in Paul School, that have huge gaps in social, emotional learning. And mindfulness is just one of the many skills that helps. There is absolutely a protocol to why a student would go to behavior inclusionist versus go to the principal because they behaved in the way they behaved. Is the protocol completely completed? No, because we're just starting to think this through. But I will tell you that the principal, the assistant principal, guidance counselor at Lebanon, all at different times said, this has allowed our administrators to lead their building. This has allowed our administrators to be in classrooms evaluating, observing, because they're not in the office, taking care of kids who really need a reset. So I, I think that that's huge. If, if we can get Jen and Jim in classrooms observing and evaluating and not having to do the office piece, you can walk into the office right now at any time and there could be four or five kids in there. Some that are, that have just plain old misbehaved and need a consequence, and some that don't know how to reset themselves.
It's my understanding that a lot of kids like going to the office.
You're right.
So, it's not a consequence to, to a lot of kids.
But I'm, I'm, I mean, I'll only give you an example of a student that was suspended for five days. The day the student returned, didn't make it for two hours and ended up back in the office. Suspension is not working for many of these kids. They want it, they want to go home. It's not really a consequence for them.
It's a parenting issue.
In some cases, that there is a consequence.
It's not really a school issue, it's a parenting issue.
Jim, did you want to, can you share a report?
Yeah, but this, this doesn't eliminate suspensions, it doesn't eliminate consequences. It just gives us an additional layer of support which doesn't exist right now. So kindergarten registration was held on May three. We had forty students register. We have an additional three students scheduled to come in on May twenty-two. So it puts us at forty-three for now, and I've been told typically it was about ten who register over the summer. The Tigers Theater Integrating Guidance Education Responsibility came from Plymouth State University to perform and speak to our students in grades K to four. They performed Brand New Day, which encourages students to be resilient, stand up for themselves and others. The performance took place in the gym, and the performance and performers were really well received. Teachers have started the process of placing students for next year. Placement group includes grade level teachers, Amy Wentworth Godfrey representing special ed, and either myself or Jen Kewell. The group considers academic performance, student chemistry, support needed, total student count and boy-girl ratio. And I was asked to mention this in my report, so I would like to take the opportunity to recognize the staff member. Each month at our community day, we recognize the staff member of the month. Staff members nominate others by private email. The staff members recognize community day in front of the school community and given a paw trophy. They are also awarded the right to park in the employee of the month parking spot. This month's winner was Jess Cormier, seventh grade math teacher.
Yay! Excellent.
Officer Landry and I went to each class, grades five to eight, to address comments regarding guns in the recent school shootings in Colorado. So, we have kids who play shooting games in Fortnite, and a lot of times, I'm gonna kill you or I'm, I'm gonna get this gun, or conversations that may be okay in that context at home in that, with that video game in front of you, may be okay. But we just wanted to clarify, those conversations that may be okay there, aren't okay at school. So kids are held accountable for that, so we wanted to make it crystal clear where we stood in terms of gun talk, I'm gonna kill you type of comments at school. We also addressed the, there was recently a shooting in Colorado. Seven injured, one killed, so we, we spoke to that as well. State standardized testing starts tomorrow. Oh, oh, no.
Sandy have a question?
Sorry, Sandy.
How is Officer Landry working? We haven't heard in his school.
I think he's getting more and more comfortable as we go. His niche is kind of yet to be carved out in terms of how do we best use him. So right now, his, his title, resource officer, is perfect, because he's just a resource in the building for whoever needs him, whenever they need him. So I know I pulled, I've, I've leaned on him a couple of times. But just knowing that he's here at this point is, is nice.
How are the students receiving him?
When he went away for a training, and one of the big, one of his big takeaways was, not only you patrolling the school, making the school safer, but you should be actively looking to make connections with students. So he's kind of in that mode right now.
He did some of the, not dare, but whatever you had before, right?
Yeah.
He did some of that, so a lot of the kids know him.
He's still doing that now.
Anne?
I'll just add to that, one of the real big values I see in having the resource officers, because we can, the, the resource officer can connect at home. So if we see problems with our students entering school, and we know that there's home issues, the resource officer can get on top of it in a heartbeat. And I've used that, the resource officer, already three or four times for that. He can follow through with the police piece of what's happening in children's homes.
He needs to make those visits while you can continue to work at the school.
Right, and, you know, it hasn't happened yet, but there have been, you know, I know of instances where a resource officer and someone from the school both would visit a home to try to. But I've, I think it's a huge resource for that purpose, because you're right. A lot of what we're dealing with are home issues. And if we can nip that in the bud.
State standardized testing starts tomorrow and goes through Wednesday, June five. Each grade will be tested in math, reading and writing. Fifth and eighth grade are also tested in science. Two hours are budgeted for the math portion of the test, and there's an hour for each, for both writing and reading. And each grade level test on one section per day. So you won't do all three parts of the test on one day. Maybe Monday, math, Wednesday, writing, Friday, reading. And then as, as the year kind of comes to a close here, upcoming dates, there's a lot to keep track of. So we had kindergarten parent info tonight, we had career day today. Ms. Kewell couldn't be here tonight, because she's going on the DC trip tomorrow. They leave at six, which means she's here at five-thirty, which means she's up around at four, getting ready. So she couldn't be here, DC, kids are leaving tomorrow. Progress reports get sent out Wednesday. This Friday, there's a Memorial Day celebration, a barbecue. Wednesday, there's a solo. Wednesday, there's a solar sprint field trip. May thirty, uh, fourth grade's going on a field trip to Remick Farm. Five-thirty-one, fourth grade's going on another field trip to the Opera House in Rochester to watch the play Arabian Nights. June three through June six, sixth grade's going to Camp Kellyumet. June three, there's a preschool tour coming to Paul School. June five, uh, grade two is going on a, a field trip to the Farm Museum. June seven, uh, I'll need to ask permission from this, if it's okay with any support from you guys, but kindergarten would like to go on a field trip to York's Wild animal kingdom. June eleven, uh, is talent show. June twelve is falling step up date for eighth grade. June thirteen is eighth grade sea perch trip to UNH. June fifteen is eighth grade dinner and dance. June seventeen's field day, June eighteen's rain day field day. Rain day. June nineteen is eighth grade graduation. June twenty, kindergarten graduation. June twenty, award ceremony. And June twenty-one's last day of school and step up day. There's a lot, a lot coming on.
Did you say barbecue? Where's that going?
So this Friday, in the cafeteria, we've invited, uh, active, active milita, active members of the military and veterans to come to the school to eat lunch with their family members if they have them. And if not, they're invited to come eat with our, in place of where our eighth grade students would be, from twelve forty-five to one fifteen. And after that, we're kind of doing like a student Memorial Day show at one-thirty. So folks are allowed to, they can leave and come back, or if they're eating with that late lunch group, they can just stick around. Each grade level has, has a, a small, brief presentation, and then we also have chorus performing in between presentations.
Nice.
It should be nice to do that.
That's very nice to be able to know.
Outstanding. Do we need to vote for him on the kindergarten field trip?
Your, please, because it's in Maine.
They go every year, they need to go.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we give the kindergarten permission to travel to York's Wild Kingdom in Maine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Funds are there, aye as well?
Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks Jim, any other questions? Transportation director report. Would you like to come up, Brennan, maybe?
You don't want me to hide back here?
No. If it's okay.
I'm in front of you. So I didn't really have that much this month. I attended the New Hampshire School and Art Association training in Nashville that you guys let me go to, thank you. It was a great learning experience, I, I learned a lot. Um, and I've also passed my state certification, um, training, so.
Congrats.
We completed our state evacuation drills on our buses, the kids did a great job. Of course, they all enjoy jumping out of the bus, so it's great. But it was really hard in the heat of the rain, and the kids really cooperated well when we had to do it. And then there was the typo, I have to stay paying kindergarten. I was paying the best, but I was invited to the kindergarten registration, um, to sit there as transportation to start that off with the families, and I think it was also pretty well, I had a lot of families ask questions.
You did a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, and that was, I hope I get to do that in the future, because I think it really helps with those parents that had the concern of, you know, putting your kid on a huge bus and saying goodbye for the day.
No car seats?
Yes, no car seats.
That's the first big time.
It is, and that was a big question, is the no car seat.
Is, does every kid do the state evacuation drill?
So all our students on our buses, so we just pick a day, and they're due twice a year. I think it's October fifteenth and May fifteenth, I, I have to have reports into the state that we have done them and confirmations of the amount of students that we did, so we just pick a day, um, to do it, which is great, because I gave the drivers two weeks and I want them done, and then it rained almost every day. So, and obviously it's pouring out, we're not good.
Do they just pull up and, and get out that way?
So a couple buses do it a day, and pull up, and one will pull up past the awning and one will do it over here. Um, we try to teach the kids, under evacuation, you're supposed to stand a hundred feet away. We try to teach the kids teams, we have a student on each bus that learns how to use the radio, where the first aid kit is, how to use the emergency doors. We usually train two of our bigger kids on how to appropriately help the little kids off the bus, and teach them to stand against the wall and be quiet. And honestly, they did, they did a superb job this year.
Terrific.
Did you want?
Any questions?
I'll send the agenda later, so I didn't want to speak to you.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, Ralph?
Can we, well, Brennan's right here, can we, uh, jump to part eleven of our agenda, under other business?
Is that okay with Jen and Sandy?
Yeah.
Are you, are you prepared for it?
No, you speak for it. Your transportation committee update.
So today, we met with the transportation committee, and we, we had sent out our RFQs, and we do a segment, and we got this. So, um, Ralph, you did ask me one question in that meeting, and I want to answer it right now, so it is coming, so.
Good.
We did receive, um, the quotes, the RFQs, we only, I sent it out to five companies.
Thank you.
I got an email back from one company saying they weren't going to bid this year, which is a company that bid last year. Um, and then WC Cressy's on the type A and type C bus, so the only one I really go to Cressy's. We've done great with them in the past, and they're honestly very easy to work with. I think all of a sudden, question, and they answer it.
Is there a legal minimum, how many bids you have to get?
What's that?
Is there a legal minimum to how many bids I need to receive?
No, by policy, you, I mean, you, you're looking for three if you can, and, you know, as you can see in the bottom of that form, that Excel form, Brennan solicited five. Uh, certainly attempted to get as many bids as possible, but no, there's not a law.
Covered three states?
What Jerry's saying is accurate, it's, it's important, you can't force people to bid on something, but you certainly have to open it up to the bidding process.
And I did send them all out.
Why wouldn't everyone bid? Why wouldn't they want to bid?
Honestly, it's a very, um, small setting, and for people who haven't. A lot of these companies are, I mean, you can see, if you look where the state's, where they're located, there's only one in New Hampshire. Um, and then we have Maine and Massachusetts and Connecticut, and a lot of them don't bother to bid, because to get their warranty work. So it's harder, and we're a small school, so instead of getting six buses getting ordered, we have one.
Okay. Not worth the time?
Yeah.
Were you able to find out, uh, the?
I'm just gonna do it for you.
Got it.
The total purchase price from last year is seventy-seven passengers?
I did not get that yet, I'm sorry, I went over to, um, the kindergarten, because I didn't ask.
So I think the recommendation from the transportation committee would be to, uh, follow up with Cressy and Son for a thirteen-plus-one passenger school bus, uh, at sixty-one-five-seventy, and a seventy-seven passenger school bus at eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. And, um, what I learned today was, uh, the sooner the board acts on this, the easier it would be to comply with the order through Cressy.
Is that what you expected to get around? The prices of that, around what you expected?
It is, um, I don't have the number off the top of my head for last year, but it's, um, last year we got seventy-seven, and I was pretty sure it was around eighty-eight from what I remember, but, like I said, I went into the kindergarten, because the teachers asked me to come in and address transportation, so I did not get that after the meeting.
Ralph, you want to make the motion?
Well, I, I suppose I could, but I'd make a motion to, well, I don't know, because I'm part of the transportation committee making the recommendation. I guess I'll make a motion to accept the transportation committee's recommendation.
Which is?
What I said, uh, thirteen passenger, uh, school bus for sixty-one-five-seventy, and a seventy-seven passenger school bus for eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
I second it.
Upper discussion, Sandy has a question?
I have a question, this is for replacing buses for next year.
Correct.
Right, so they can't technically be purchased until July first.
Correct. Okay. Any further discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And as you see on here, the minivan was here, and I did not get any response of that. I did get one after the date of response, and that is attached. But the offer's only good for twenty days. Um, so what I've learned with this, and I sent that out to six companies, I followed up with six companies after the date when I didn't have any, um, I learned a lot, actually. So there's a New Hampshire bid site, which is listed here under the number three. And that changes on July one what's on that, what's available for us. So what it is, is like a criteria that you have to meet, and you can purchase, uh, through a state pricing, um, thing. So I looked at it, Ralph introduced me to this, and I looked at it, and right now there is vehicles on it. Of course, they're only good till June thirtieth, so nothing I can purchase, but the price is lower than if I was to go to a dealership. So I'd like to take the opportunity, when that comes back out on July one, to look, see what there is for minivans at that price, before I go solicit to the dealers again for a price, because they are only good for twenty days, the prices that they're giving me.
Can't put a one in front of that two O?
Would you stand, I just don't think they'll go with it.
Would you like the motion for that, or? Ralph, what would the committee like?
Um, I don't think we need to take action on that particular item right now.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, move forward.
Yep, moving forward. Okay, thank you very much, and we're moving into old business, Deputy Treasurer nomination.
First, before we move into that, I want to acknowledge, at the last board meeting, at my discretion, uh, the school board went into a non-public, uh, meeting to discuss the hiring of official, and this was done in error, and again, it was my error. The error was that the actual appointment of a public official was not the hiring of an employee, and the appointment of an official should be done in pub, needs to be done in public. And again, uh, the board went into non-public at my discretion, so I, I acknowledge that that was my mistake. Uh, we're gonna remedy that tonight by revisiting the nomination. The nomination was made to appoint, uh, Priscilla Cobath as a deputy treasurer of the Wakefield School Board.
Well, I would like to, uh, make that motion again to nominate, uh, Priscilla Cobath as a deputy treasurer. Based on the rec, uh, the, the, um, recommendation from the school district treasurer.
Someone needs to second it to get it out there? No?
Uh, motion failed.
Seeing that that motion failed, I also received another recommendation, um, after I made the report to, um, Carleen Stewart, that at that time, the motion had failed previously as well. And she came back with a recommendation or nomination for Howie Knight to be the deputy treasurer. You have the, her email there in your hand.
I would like to nominate Howie Knight for the deputy treasurer position.
I'll second it.
For discuss, for discussion?
Did he agree? Did you, have you already asked him?
Good question, this is in case, um,
Carleen is away.
Okay.
Which she will be soon.
I'm a little bit afraid of the next board meeting.
I'll bring you to the next horde.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Fogg.
Four and O, four and O, four.
That's funny.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, next item of old business is National History Day, Washington DC trip.
Yeah, just want to update you, I, uh, received an email from Mr. Soul after, um, Wakefield Pride Day. And I was, they asked him for an update on where they were with fundraising. Currently, they've had about a thousand dollars donated. Um, they raised five hundred and fifty dollars at Wakefield Pride Day, and they already have appointments with, um, Senator Shaheen and Senator Hassan, so when they get to DC. And that is their recent update.
Actually, I have something.
Oh, yeah, please.
I have something to add to that, unfortunately, Cindy's Place, they, uh,
you asked her, correct?
No, it was Crystal.
Oh, Crystal asked, okay. Crystal spoke with Cindy to see if she'd do a fundraiser. Cindy does, Cindy's Place does fundraisers for food pantry, and, um, all kinds of wonderful things in town. And Cindy graciously will donate all the food, work, labor, and it will be, uh, from four o'clock to eight o'clock on May twenty-eighth, um, all donations for your dinner will go. One hundred percent of your donations will go to the eighth grade trip.
I'd like to see the kids surfing it.
It hasn't gotten that far yet.
They are, oh, she said she was donating the labor, so good.
There, there's only five of them, so, you know, whatever Cindy asks them.
They can handle it.
I, I volunteered to do the dishes, so.
What date was it again?
Sorry, I was gonna pass these out, these are the flyers, you'll see them all around town.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep, thanks Cindy's Place, she's really safe. And don't forget, the, um, GoFundMe page is still out there on Facebook.
Can I just?
Yeah, Carleen?
The kids worked most of the weekend, they, they worked all day Friday at a book fundraiser. And then they tagged at the mobile, and I can go, it's on Sunday. So they raised about five hundred and fifty dollars this week.
Excellent. How much did you need to raise?
Seventy-five.
For five kids to go to Washington DC who earned their way there. They won their National History Day at the regionals.
Thanks for your help.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is the Wakefield School Board Scholarship. We, um, tabled that at the last meeting, and I was looking for an answer on that.
Actually, I thought you.
Well, we, I had given it back to you, I, we, I had given it back to you, you wanted to review them as a board?
I, I did read them, but I still thought they were, the decision toward the scholarship was gonna be at the administration level. Was that correct or no?
No.
Well, let's see, um,
Yeah, the examples one, two, and three.
Well, one of them was, didn't answer the correct question, right? And those are part of, what, since everybody's come across the page?
Uh, I got, I hear, I hear someone.
Thank you. Ralph? Ralph?
Yeah, I know that the, um, tripping point at the last discussion was the right answer to the wrong question, and, you know, thinking about all of that, really, it's a hard lesson to learn, but it's a lesson that needs to be learned. The answer might be great, but if it's the wrong question that you're answering, you know, we as adults have learned through these, uh, experiences that the right answer to a wrong question is not the right answer. So I, I would strongly recommend that we, we move that particular essay out of, out of the running.
So we are looking at the essay on page one and page two, I believe. What is page three? I thought three was when you had eliminated, that was.
Oh, okay, I.
Right?
Yep, you're right, I thought it was, I thought it was two.
Okay, it's one and two.
Yeah, my mistake, I thought it was.
So one and two, and, um, I just want to say that I loved, anybody who's watching, I loved reading them. I love your interest in, in our planet and our, the future of this world. Um, it really made me smile that, that at this age you would care about it. It really, um, I, I want to appreciate all of them, all of the essays were, were a pleasure to read, and thank you. Anybody else? I could do it as simple as, um, we have two to choose from, so I could basically, um, ask for, who would like to vote for number one, and you could raise your hand. And then I'll ask who, and see how it goes from there. Who would like to vote for number one? Number one has it. Okay. Number one essay on page one, so they were really, really fun to read, so thank you. Yep, I'm gonna pass the, um, essays back up. Jerry's gonna take them back.
Thank you. I still have copies.
Oh, actually, I have a question to add to this for the old business, the Wakefield School Board. Last year, I attended the awards night for Spalding and Kingswood. And I'm here Thursday, I'm happy to do it, but if somebody else would like to, I'm looking for the, to go. This Thursday, this Thursday, the 23rd, you get on stage at Spalding and you get to hand the, the awards. There are several, there were several last year.
I'm talking T-ball.
Okay. You can't do it? Okay, I can do it, Ralph, unless you would like to do it?
No, I think you ought to.
I'll do it. I don't know the date for Kingswood, we'll bring them back, and, and I will be at Spalding on Thursday night.
All right, new business, actually, I think these were added, the new business here was added. Ralph, I think you added the last three?
I did, they all kind of dovetail into each other. And I think they're somewhat important for us to discuss. Knowing that in our community and school district, quite often we're looked at as leaders. And we should recognize that, and we should, when it comes to climate and culture in our school, there's things that, that can be improved vastly. Not all, not all elements of the school have issues or problems. But the ones, the areas that have issues or problems can learn a lot by watching the adults in the room. Tag where it, where the, the people that are supposed to be setting the tone. And I think we need to understand that thoroughly. When we enter into things like a discussion over spending money, shouldn't be, you know, it's that person's fault from way back then, and, and we can't build, we can't go anywhere without tearing down somebody, so we, we really should be hoping that the kids, you know, I, I would like to really see a climate in the school where as soon as the kids come through the door, they're not only hugging the teacher, but they're hugging each other.
You can't do that.
You can't do that?
You can't, legally you can't.
You can't. Actually, I, I have something I'd like to say. I've got my hand raised. Climate and culture, this board has been under fire by many people. We are not at all interested in talking about what went on in prior experiences at all. But in order to, for people, for people to understand why we're in the position that we're in, we must repeat ourselves about a thousand times. We do not want to go backwards, we do not want to blame anybody else, we want to go forward. It's a highly intelligent, hardworking, competent group of people, and I'm proud to be part of this. And we, if nobody brings it up again, we will not. So, am I correct, everybody?
Yeah, I, um, I didn't realize that being on the school board gave people the opportunity to like, call you names and you can't respond. I didn't, you know, and I don't know a lot about public, you know, offices or anything like that. I want to make the school a better place for every kid in the school. That's my goal, it's the only reason I'm sitting here. Who's going to run? Who really wants to do that after the crap we take? The personal assaults and the nastiness on Facebook. You know, I haven't done anything to hurt anybody on here, and, and yet I still get personally attacked. And so that's, that's the climate and culture, we all need to, everybody who walks in this door needs to consider that, just because we're sitting here in an elected position, you should have a better way to get your point across than to call people names. And we, as a board, we've not called anybody names.
The... I think the, the issue I have with, with, based on, based on some experience, is knowing that, that, um, when the kids observe parents getting away with something less than honorable actions.
On the school board?
Uh, not, not just the school board, I mean, it goes, so what I'm trying to say is each and every element of our school district, whether you're students, staff, administrators, school board, parents, janitors, it doesn't matter. If, if we're not nice to each other, the kids are picking up on it, and they don't feel as though they need to be nice themselves, because the adults aren't nice.
Jerry?
I can wait, I can wait for it.
Not every, not every element, or not every person in the groups are bad, but the ones that don't have the right attitude, don't, that don't embrace their position, don't embrace their responsibilities, stain the other parts of the group.
Okay, my, Ralph, last week, I believe you went to the selectmen and told them that the school needs to be taken away from these board members. So, I don't know, I don't understand, I can't wrap my head around that and this discussion.
You call me a socialist.
My, my approach to the selectmen is based on my own personal belief that the, the education of our children in town may be better served through a education department at the municipal level.
Okay, thank you, Sandy's next.
I have to, I have to make a comment on, on...
I'm going to cover quickly, that's not fair.
Hold on, he's, she hasn't said a word yet, she gets a turn.
I have to, I came from a town where the city council made the decisions for the school. And I was very, very happy when I moved here to know that when I went to the poll, my vote counted. My vote in Dover didn't. By the time budgets were made in Dover and you had the public hearing, it was like a week before they were going to vote. They already made the decisions. I would like to keep it the way it is. I mean, neither system is, is, you know, they have the pros and their cons, but I think this system, for me, works best.
Sorry, Ralph, you didn't finish.
No, sorry, Jen said I cut you off, so go ahead.
Go ahead.
I thought you were anti-government, if you put something in the hands of the municipality, like a, a department, it's just going to get more screwed up. You've got people, I mean, I, I can't speak for everyone, but, you know, you, you, if you're involved in the school, I mean, I'm involved in the school. I, everything that the principal ever did, I attended as a parent. Everything the teachers ever opened up in the school, I attended as a parent. I just came from kindergarten, I, because I have a kindergarten going in, only 13 families were represented there. And I, and I'm, I thought that was pitiful, of 45 people that are coming in? That was pitiful. And that's, that's what we need to work on. We, as a board, I want to make it better for every kid in the school. And, and I'm, and I'm working hard to do that. The nitpicking and the ridiculousness of people coming in and slowing it down, grinding like the wheels, grinding the wheel to a stop over silly things. There's no, there's been no bad intention here. And, and we've been working really hard, instead of getting on as for, maybe not knowing the exact rule of order for something, correct us and go on, and let's get the parents involved in this school, because that'll help make the parents feel involved, be part of the school, maybe make some parental behavior better from home, let's set some good examples. You know, let's do that instead of nitpicking at each other. Why don't we do that? Why don't we get the town in, offer hot dogs, I hear free food makes them come. Right? Let's do that.
Get some food.
Jerry?
I gotta, I want to bring it back around to, you know, what Mr. Fogg was talking about initially, was climate and culture. And I think you're absolutely right, and I want to preface my comments with, I'm not pointing my fingers anywhere, I'm not pointing it here, I'm not pointing it out in the community, at parents or any of the teachers, but we are in a culture of incivility. Our Facebook comments, the YouTube rants, celebrating what we see on social media, is by how many likes we get, about how outrageous somebody can, what they can do, or what they can say, or how they can one-up the next person. And our kids see, you're right, absolutely right, Mr. Fogg, they see that and they emulate that, you know. When people, you know, and I, and I say it kind of tongue-in-cheek, if you want to, and I don't say it to anybody here in particular, or, or anything, but if you're looking for somebody to blame, the, the first place is the mirror. And that's where, that's where our issues are. And our kids live it every single day, no matter what we say, they're going to do what we, what we do. And you know, it's, it, I, you're absolutely right. I'll bring it back to, you know, the, the staff right now, and I'll hand this out to board members, which is, they had started this before you, you had put that on the agenda, but to start a climate and culture survey to internally assess, nobody knows the climate and culture better than the teachers here. And they'll tell you, you know, when it's bad and when it's good. And so I'm really looking forward to getting the information back from them. So I think then, presenting that to you about where we need to go, and again, without pointing fingers, but by leading, and showing that, and, and every, everything that we do in the school, whether it's myself, or the board, or the administration here, the teachers, and down to the kids. You know, Mr. Lampron's right, we need to teach the kids this, if we want them to do this, we, we darn well better behave and do it ourselves, because if we don't, we are just, we're just treading water. We're not going to make progress. And I would call upon the board to show that, show that example, and call each other out when we're not doing it. And accept that, and not make excuses. Let's lead the school.
Thank you.
Can we see the, the results for this?
Yes, we say, when you get the results, when I get the results, you'll get the results. Absolutely, I want you to see this.
Sandy?
I have to say, I think the board has made a, a first step at changing the start time for our meetings. It hopefully will allow more parents to come. I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting, I would personally like a, a later start. But at least 6:00 o'clock is making it a little bit more palatable for parents to come, if they so choose. We are here as a board to serve the public, not to have times that suit our schedule, that we're here for the, should be here for the parents, and that's a good start. And maybe in the future, we can see, maybe pushing back the, or up the start time, back to start time to a little bit later. But I think 6:00 o'clock is a good start.
And?
I just want to thank the board, I couldn't be happier to hear you all talk about civility at this level, because it is the adults that are children they're modeling, so thank you. I think that's a really great statement.
As far as curriculum goals, folks? Curriculum goals?
Curriculum goals, we actually had a meeting on the 14th that was excellent, about goals in general, not just curriculum, but facilities, and it's in the minutes, I think.
The goals are left out, right? What, the minutes don't have the goals?
I know, I think they just got handed out here, but we'll make sure they're obviously in it for the next meeting. They'll be there for, they're, they're out, they'll just be approved at the next one.
Is it, is it appropriate to believe that we can educate the kids today as we were educated 50 years ago? Is illogical? Is there a reason, is there a reason why we believe it's illogical?
Doesn't function the same way it did, Jen?
Because everybody is so lawsuit happy, and everybody is looking to point a finger if they think something might be wrong. If I was a teacher, I would be very hesitant to hug a kid, like you mentioned. I'm a T-ball coach this year, and again, and when I'm trying to show a kid how to bat, I've got to be very, very careful where I put my hands. You know, and I'm certainly not out there to do anything, you know, bad to a kid, but I've got to be very careful, because as you've seen, even if I am totally on the up and up, and I'm, and I'm volunteering my time, and I just want to, you know, have coaches in Wakefield, anybody else's perception can ruin my life and my kid's life. It's the kind of society we live in.
The, the thing that, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about why we're not meeting the standardized testing, and I think a comment was that, that, um, we have adopted a different curriculum. And what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to bring back into focus is the idea that kindergarten, we're learning how to socialize. We're learning how to say, hey buddy, you know, your fly's down, your shoes are untied.
Bringing it to them.
By the time we're in third grade, if I remember right, by the time we're in third grade, we could do cursive writing. We knew the difference between a capital T or a Q and a, and a small q.
Actually, Janice Peterman-Marie had her hand up after Ralph.
I was just going to reply to exactly what you're saying, I wish you had, I wish the board meeting hadn't been at the same time as the kindergarten meeting, because I really wish everybody here had been there. And to hear the kindergarten teachers talk about what they, you know, how much they care about the kids, what they do for the kids, how they can't go into the bathroom and help them wipe, because they can't. And that the kid has to be able to go to school, doing that now, but how much they care about them and what they're going to teach them, what they're going to start out with, and what they're going to end with, and how amazing it is. What one kid can learn in one year in kindergarten, it's like the big year. I think everybody here would have been really impressed with the three teachers that sat there and talked about what they were going to do with our kids next year. Makes me feel a lot better to bring my kid to the school.
Marie?
So, I feel vulnerable, so, since I'll update myself, and I went to school 50 years ago too, and learned in a different way. And through our kids, and now my, our grandkids, and, and being in the school system, there, the, the way teaching is approached today, and the, and other things, options that are available to them, I'll give you an example. There's interactive boards now. I wish that when I went to school, I had that, because it's just amazing. So there's interactive boards and, and where, and there's sound in the school, in, in, in the classrooms as well. So, on a, on a smart board, there's a, um, there's a heart, and it's like a piece of puzzle. And kids can actually go up to the, go up to the, to the board and take the pieces of the heart and put it together. And when all the pieces of the heart are situated, you can actually hear the heartbeat. That's amazing. I wish I had that when I was going to school. That would, I mean, to me, my mouth just dropped, and if you saw the parents that had seen that, that example as well, because then you're, I, I would feel more engaged in that than having to go to a library and look at encyclopedias and me gurgitate what was in that encyclopedia. And really, I don't know how much I got out of that. I'm learning more now about history than I did 50 years ago. So, I think we had the fundamentals, well, 50 years ago, but they're teaching the same fundamentals in a different way and to, and to entice kids more. You have, you have technology and, and social media is a big, is a big thing that we didn't have when we went to school. We picked up the phone, we had the rotary phone, and we picked up the phone, and we were on the phone in the closet, talking to our friends, so the people were hearing it.
That's a better way, I'm sorry, that's a better way.
But I mean, that's, I mean, that's how it has evolved, and there's, you know, you can't find a rotary phone anymore. So, something's so good that you don't...
Sandy? Sandy, she was up next.
I have to say, it's been over 60 years since I started school. And I have to say that I prefer what we do now versus 50 years, 60 years ago, because we're more inclusive. When I went into school, if you had polio, it was unheard of to have kids in school with polio. I had maybe one student when I was in junior high that had polio. Mercy, people were really, really mean to her. We had, I had a student that I knew that was blind, that my next-door neighbor got her to come to regular school. Otherwise, she was going to a special school, and it was kids that were learning way below her. And he fought to have her in. Kids don't have to fight to be in the school now, we're more inclusive. I, I don't want to go back, I mean, we had, when I went to school, we had what were called basement rooms. And the, because the classroom was in the basement, and it was for the kids that were incorrigible. That either couldn't learn, had a disability, but didn't meet the criteria to be, go to a special school, or they didn't learn, they didn't care, they were disruptive. I don't want to go back to that way, I, that's... Or they didn't learn, they didn't care, they were disruptive. I don't wanna go back to that way. That serves no purpose.
We have music in that basement.
I'll second your motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to go past eight o'clock.
I'll second it.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
And I just wanna kind of answer that question as well. I think that, kind of, if I consider, if I'm beating the same drum as before. But our kids have so many more obstacles today than when I had a kid. I mean, you know, you never heard of sixty-eight hours of hunger when I was a kid.
Yeah, they were hungry kids back then.
I'm just saying, you know, we, we're doing a lot of it now as schools. How many times did you ever hear of a friend being homeless when I went to school? And that wasn't sixty years ago, but it was a few years back. They have a lot more challenges. They have a lot more distractions. They've got parents who are underemployed. So the schools are tasked differently, dealing with students differently than when I was a kid, even when Jim was a kid.
He was a kid.
So I don't, I, I think good teaching is good teaching, but there are some things that we can't do the same as we did before.
Foundations and fundamentals are what I'm hoping to harp on, if I have to harp on anything. I, I would think there's a a foundation for knowledge, knowledge growth. And a lot of those foundations are, or there's really a single foundation. And sometimes it's hard to teach morals, sometimes it's hard to teach logic or common sense, you know, but if, as a group, we're, we're exhibiting those lessons through our actions, maybe we'll, maybe we'll get to the goal that I, that I can see.
When, when you're talking about our culture, the one thing that always bothered me, and I don't know how it is now, I honestly haven't heard. But a few years back, when the kids passed in the hallway, I know they had to be quiet, or whatever, but they were not allowed to even wave to each other. And to me, that was generating a society of kids who, you know, the people who walk by you on the sidewalk and don't even look at you. I hate that, you know. I like to talk to everybody, go figure. But they should be waving, and I know they have to be quiet, but they should be encouraged to make eye contact, and to wave to each other, and to just be friendly with the kids who aren't in their class. That whole look down and go from point A to point B without making a noise. And combine that with texting instead of talking on the phone. And all the, you know, I know my kid likes to go home and look at her phone more than she wants to talk to the rest of her family, which I don't allow on a regular basis. But that, that makes them all unable to speak to people in general. And I, I think that's something we really need to worry about in school, you know, is, and you can't take away everybody's electronics at home, because that's a parent's job. But we do need to encourage them to make eye contact when they pass in the hall, say hello to people that they don't know so well. For the culture.
To, to, to put an end to that part of my discussion, is it possible to see what is the end result at, at the end of every class year? How does the board understand what that, whether it's first, second, right up to eighth grade, how do we gauge what knowledge the student has coming out of that class and heading into Spalding? Is there, is there like a, I mean, other than the standardized testing, how do we know whether or not our goals were accomplished, you know? I mean, how do we know really what each student, other than the report card? Hopefully it's a little better than mine. How do we, how do we gauge what we've taught our kids?
Well, I don't know. I just look at this, if you don't mind, on our whole business. I think a perfect example of that is the kids that are going to the National History Day. Oh, that's, that's a gauging of what kids have accomplished, and how successful they are, and how many students have been selected to go. It may not be a test, you know, it may not be a class as a whole, because each child, including myself, learn different ways. But you're asking for evidence, and I look at that as evidence, as showing success that has happened.
Jen, maybe we should follow through. You've talked about it a lot at the joint school board meetings. We need to follow through probably a little bit better than we do following our kids into high school, and seeing how they do in a different school, in a different environment, and see if they are being successful. And we could probably find some weak spots that way, and bring it back to the earlier grades and work on that.
And we, we discussed a lot of this at our, at the workshop. I'm sorry we weren't there. It was, it was very, it was as good of a discussion as this is, and wanting to put benchmarks in our own, not the testing that is gonna be created. I thought that was very productive, in, in a lot of areas of the school, with Jen and Jerry's help. Sorry, Jerry.
That's okay. No, I just wanted, you know, to Jen's point, you know, we are starting to do a better job, you know, working with. Jim and I are actually gonna be joining the high school on May thirtieth in the morning. We're gonna go from our, instead of stopping here first, we'll be stopping at the high school and walking through some classes, and making sure we interact with some kids from Wakefield there, and, you know, just kind of pick people.
You're gonna pull Mr. Bouchard? How you doing, class? Morning, class?
Good morning, good morning, right? So we'll be, we'll be starting that, and then actually Mr. Roy's coming up the following day. Mr. Roy's coming up the following day on May thirty-first to kind of be here in the school.
Nice.
Yeah, so we're gonna, gonna start that off.
The last, the last part of that new business was the purpose of non-public sessions. And I'm hoping that everybody here got a chance to see the DVD.
You do know that Will Phillips is coming under, June fourth?
I do. The only purpose of the DVD was to try to give us all a head start on, you know, what, what to expect, maybe even some questions that we can give Mike. What, what I had was a problem after the last meeting, the non-public, it was just, we can't go in to protect ourselves. I, I can't have, you know, a bad bone above somebody and ask to go into non-public.
Point of order. We did not go in to that meeting to protect ourselves. We thought that was because of hiring, that that is how it was done. If we do it incorrectly, we know we're gonna be called on. The intent of that meeting was to do it correctly. We had no problem, as you saw, doing that in public, that we were trying to do it correctly. And there is a rare case cited that because it isn't a hiring and it's an appointment, it has to be done in public. Normally, that, we have no appointments to back this up with. The only reason that was done in non-public was because that was how we thought it was done correctly.
And, you know, here we have a lesson to be learned. I, I do know that on two separate occasions, I told Bob, and I wish he was here tonight to affirm this, two different times, I said, this is not non-public issues. And three different times, you know, this is.
But you knew the case, you knew the case and you didn't tell us about it? You knew, you knew the case, there's a single case that discusses an appointment versus a hiring. A case, case law. Did, you knew the case law and you didn't share it with the other board members?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying.
You could have stopped us at any time.
Well, that's why I would say to the chair, as I did, this is not non-public.
So you knew an appointment was non-public, was, was in public versus not in public, in non-public?
When the disc, okay, so I'm not trying to, all I'm trying to say is there's reasons to go in a non-public, and there are reasons to stay out of non-public. And at the last non-public session, I didn't see any reason to be in there, other than when Jerry left the room.
Sandy?
I feel that this is a moot point. I think we all went in under the advisement of the superintendent, he put it on. He tonight even stated that he had made a mistake. I think it's time to move on and not, you know, we've, we've learned our lesson. I don't think we need to discuss this anymore for my opinion.
Can I just add, I, I'd say, you know, again, as I acknowledge, that was my mistake, and I, I did learn a lesson in there, for all who wanna listen, that that anytime something seems that it might be a little different for me, and again, an appointment is different for me. Yeah, it's not something we, you know, and, and as I get to be honest, is I, I look back on it, and how could I have done it better? How could I realize that? You know, I look back on that, okay, so when we had a number of resignations several years ago from the school board, we did our appointment in public. And if I had looked back, I probably would have, I, I didn't think it was an issue. And if I ever think it's gonna be an issue, uh, 'cause I wanna make sure, my job is to make sure I lead this board as well, to make a good, solid decisions, and keep them out of hot water if I can, if possible. And I intend to do that to the best of my ability. Again, that was, again, that was entirely my error, as I said multiple times.
So that's, that's the last angle on this dovetail of all three topics, is when we enter into non-public, the, the public has faith that we're doing the right thing in, in the right order. So we have learned, I mean, your apology tonight was certainly subsequent to my request to put this on the agenda. If we're adults, we live, we learn, and we move on. Please, take the time to watch the DVD, because I, it's two hours of three old white guys talking about how it should be done, how things have gone through the court system, what kind of teeth there is in the ninety-one A laws. It's beneficial to all of us, I think, to share any information we can when it comes to regarding policy procedure and legal lawful actions of a publicly elected board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other business, I believe we had the Transportation Committee update already. I have a little bit of information for everyone for the Water District. Do you remember that it, Jerry mentioned it to us the other day. So I went to Kelly Collins, our town administrator, and asked, I did a little research and asked for some history of what this actually is really all about. The Water District is a district. It's not a town, it's not a county. And they have applied for grants, emergency grants around the state. I don't know if she says which ones they are, but to, and they cannot apply on their own. They have, the town has to apply for them. And this is grant money only. And what they are doing with this grant money is creating a loop from the school to the houses, to the businesses, so that the, when the water breaks, as it has been breaking, they can get water to the school, to the towns, and to the businesses. If, so initially, the town administrator is greatly concerned because they do have to service the grants. Grants are, actually, these particular grants are highly demanding. It's gonna create more manpower needed at the town level for the Water District. However, it is not in the best interest of the town to have the school not have water, the businesses not have water, and the houses not have water. There are about two hundred and ninety-six homes, I think, I don't know that, in that neighborhood. So as such, the residents, so basically what, so initially, you know, obviously, this is a huge issue, but it would provide water to the school in a closed-loop system when they need to do repairs. And in order for the Water District to get these grants, they do need the support of the town and the school.
So why, if it's separate from the town, does the town need to administer it?
Because they are just a district. They're a water district. The grants will only service towns or counties.
So does that mean the town needs to take over the Water District?
No, no. It is not yet. All that they asked for is that they support the request for the grants to provide water to the school, to the businesses, and to the houses as the other pieces of the Water District fail. It doesn't help the school if the wa, if the, we already know what one day without water is like. Ralph?
I'd, I'd like to offer a motion to have the superintendent draft a letter for the school board's review in support of the Water District's goals.
I second it. Up for discussion? Ralph?
I think it's important to remember that, that the school is currently on the system. What's coming in the building is exiting the building through the system. I am a strong advocate of fixing our well out here if it's fixable. I'm a strong advocate of a well system up on the property that the school district owns on Rhine Road. If it can be done hand in hand with the Water District and the town and the school district, it's gonna benefit all of us. So I think, you know, working, working together is certainly more productive than not.
Jen?
I was just wondering where that attitude was when we were in front of the Budget Committee.
It is, it is a little rough. The Water District was very, very hard on the school board, but you don't, but you make the best choices. And that's what we were voted to do, so. But they were, they wouldn't vote for anything, obviously they're way over what they did. But regardless, doesn't matter, you were here to make the best decisions.
And remember.
Oh, sorry.
The representative of the school district has sat on the school board, and sometimes.
Of the Water District, you mean?
Yeah, the, the district representative at the Budget Committee hearing has sat on the school board. And he's opinionated and able to grasp any opportunity to express his opinion. So, might not be the opinion of the entire Water District, his personal opinion. So, don't, don't damage future projects based on what, whether it's him, me, you know, Jerry, Jerry's gonna say something, and we might all get mad at him.
Jerry?
You getting mad at me? I get the line. Well, first off, I think a great decision to, to look forward to what is best for the town. And number two, is there a time limit on that? And if there is, for that letter, would it be something I would email out to all of you just for your input? Because I wouldn't wanna miss a deadline if Kelly Collins needs that, that letter before our next board meeting.
I'm not aware of a deadline.
I just, I don't know.
It doesn't say, I'm reading it. It just says, anything you or your agency can do to support or expedite the San River Water District would be greatly appreciated. So the loop will allow the Water District to maintain critically needed potable water during a future project to replace existing pipe. That's a different topic. This is just a loop to help the school when everything breaks.
I know, my devil and my angel are.
I know.
I will, I will contact Ms. Collins over at the town hall and find out if there's a deadline.
Any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four and O, four and O. Other business, we did the public comment resignation nominations. Correspondence, we have a letter that Jerry will read.
Okay, so, I received this letter.
Yes, sir.
Did we lose a public comment section on the?
Yes, I read the letter and the, saying that we were following, tonight, this evening, we are following the policy, which has on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, only, the BEDH. We're following policy.
Well, it looks like you, okay, I mean, it kinda looks like it's picking and choosing parts of the policy, but that's all right. I mean, I guess, you're, you've got the cattle.
Does it proceed?
Yep, go ahead.
Reading a letter that was dated May eighth. "To whom it may concern, we would like my daughter to attend Kingswood Regional High School for her freshman year. I understand that we have missed the deadline, but would like to have the board consider her being able to tuition over to Kingswood as we feel it would be a better fit for her. I've already spoken with Kingswood, and they have no problem with her going there as long as it, it is agreed that she can be tuitioned over. Thank you for this consideration. Sincerely, signed, the mother."
So we need to put the motion on the floor, right, so we can discuss it? Do we need to do that? You can turn it over, you can take it on the. So I, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to consider the letter from Mrs., Ms. Coats.
All right, yeah, I'll second it.
I just had, okay. So we had a lot of people who thought that their, that Kingswood would be a better fit for their kids, and they didn't win the lottery to go there. And I brought up at the early meeting how I don't think it's fair that we make any kid go to a high school they don't want to go to. But we were given the absolute reasoning that it's ten percent or nothing. And that it's, it's run by the State of New Hampshire, the Department of Education. So we really have no flexibility there. We have. of Education. So, we really have no flexibility there. We have filled our ten percent, and there are several kids who do not want to go to Spalding that are having to go to Spalding. So, I don't think that anybody beyond that can get special consideration.
I agree. Ralph?
So, next year's, um, attendance, next year's attendance is, um-
We're in the middle of something.
Next year's attendance for that, or the, um, number of students is already decided?
Yeah, have the lottery.
When did that happen?
Uh, December, I guess.
The lottery is, is the, um, entrance had to be made by December first, and then the board makes a decision, draws those names, you know, from a lottery drawing out of a, you know, cup or whatever it was. And that is done at the first meeting in January.
And there were many kids who wanted to go, who are not able to go.
It was, uh, somewhat heartbreaking in that there were about eleven people in, and we could only take two.
Right.
So, it was, uh-
Can we do this one thing?
It was, um-
It's important.
Yes, there were eleven kids, and only two got to go. It was quite heartbreaking. They were all pretty much there. It was, it was not a, not a funny thing.
And, and I am, Ralph, I'm a proponent of every kid getting to choose where they go. I absolutely am, because, you know, I would like my kid to go to Kingswood, and she doesn't win that lottery, so many spots are there, she's going to Spalding, and, and I'm gonna hate it. But she's gonna have to do it, and there are already nine kids who can't go, so.
What I would like to do, however, is take this opportunity, since actually, she did ask, um, Kingswood a question that we've all wanted to know, is what would they take? So, I would like to see-
I think they would take anybody, but I think they'll lose our, our trip to Spalding, and that's gonna be a big problem.
Well, maybe, maybe you think that, we have thirty-nine students. I would be, at least wanna know what Kingswood would do the next time we go, but you can't go-
I think that although there are several kids who want to go to Kingswood, I think the majority of your students still wanna go to Spalding, and I think that if you, if we, as a group, put that in danger, I think more parents would be unhappy with that than happy.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we can look into it, but they said we had to have-
No, he said, he said you could open up dialogue.
Only because you forced him to say that, Tracy. I was there. You, you, you know, he, he said it takes years to go through the Department of Education, that they need a certain amount of money to make it work their while. Um, we, we, you know, it's important to me, but we didn't win.
The, the number of students going to Spalding is what, I mean, they, they base a lot of their spending on students that are coming out of Wakefield. So, it is gonna be a hard, hard pitch to, um, increase that number. We were shooting for twelve or fifteen percent a few years ago, and it was a no-go. And, you know, I mean, the later it on the table, it's numbers, so.
And, and I suppose that that parent can pay tuition herself if she'd like her kid to go, which is something, you know, we can all consider. But I don't think we can do it as a town. Unless the parents go differently.
Get a motion on the table.
Okay, so, somebody wanna make a motion?
The, the motion was to discuss the deal, right? So, we're discussing it, and, mm.
Uh, okay, I'll make a motion that, um, uh, the student can go to Spalding, I'm just go to Kingswood.
Can go?
Just a second, I'm just putting a vote out.
I'll second after discussion.
Okay.
How are we gonna accomplish that? They, they, we say they can, Spalding says they can't, do we, I mean?
If we say she can, then we're gonna have nine more parents back, nine more sets of parents back here.
If none of us, if we all vote no, then it fails.
Well, either that, or it could be a tie vote and fail.
Right, could be a tie vote and fail. I mean, I, we, we just have to vote on it, so, I mean, I don't know, however you phrase it.
If it's, if it's a vote of the majority in the affirmative, then, well, you will.
Well, we have to take a vote either way. I mean, would you rather it be phrased, I could withdraw that motion and say, make a motion that she doesn't go? Which would you prefer?
Move the question, I guess.
Good question. Jerry, is there another way we could vote this?
You could actually, you could have a consensus that you don't wanna take any action. This is not, I mean, listening to the discussion, uh, from the board doesn't sound like there was any consensus to move forward with, um, making this happen.
I mean, there's a list that, that we have to honor. That's, that's where-
I don't know.
I feel. What about you, Sandy?
I feel I'd like to go with consensus instead.
Okay, so I withdraw the motion to send the student to Kingswood.
I withdraw my second.
As a consensus, um, my, I guess, give a personal opinion, I think there's a list and we should honor it.
I feel we should honor the list as well.
Jen?
Same.
Ralph?
You know, we, we, no.
All right.
So, I, I will-
We thought that was definitely enough.
All right, you'll inform the parent.
I have one more thing for correspondence. I had, um, said a few meetings back, and people had questioned, making an email on to me. So, a question came up the last meeting, um, about, the question came up about, uh, did, who asked Ms. D'Agostino the forty-five-thousand-dollar note, and what line would it come from? The board meeting prior, uh, that I answered, it was myself. Uh, so, the question was, did I find the money in next year's budget for my very own raise prior to being hired? The answer is yes. I also asked how long the board is going to allow children to not reside Wakefield to continue to attend, attend the Paul School. Mr. Rigg was said all students who are attending Paul School are legally allowed to do so. I'll change that question to how many children are attending Paul School currently that who live in Milton. I said there are several reasons why a student may live in another town and go to school in Wakefield, whether it be part-time custody, homeless, or whatever the other reasons might be. It's not, uh, information that I would disclose in public. Third question was, when did the board make a decision that the treasurer had to send a note to the S U that stayed the de- that she had deputized me as the deputy treasurer to fill in when she's absent? I don't know, problem doing this. I've held this non-paying position for a number of years. I just wanted to know when the, in quotes, "the board" made this decision, whether it was the whole board or one person once again making decisions on her own outside of a meeting. My response is the board did not make that decision. My, my decision was made to, um, have a notification sent to me so I could bring a motion to the board, so it was nothing from the board was my decision again. Is there, the fourth question, the final one, that I'm gonna answer, is there a line item in the current budget to pay for any portion of the cost of trips for students and parents? If so, what specific line is this? The answer is no, there's none. Those are questions and answers.
Um, excellent. Ralph?
Yeah, um, earlier you'd stated you wanted to go by the policy, so if you read part one of B E D H, time will be set aside at the beginning of the meeting and prior to starting non-public session for public comment and visitors. So, by policy, it allows two sections.
Well, by board consent.
Pardon me?
By board consent.
By board consent, it's policy. So, the board, the, the policy was already reaffirmed, and you wanna violate it, but that's all right.
Is there any sort of policy about interrupting a meeting while we're having a conversation about something else to, uh, from outside, someone outside the board? Because that would seem to be a good policy as well, that one might wanna consider.
Sandy?
Um, I guess it's, um, maybe we need to reward number one, because when I read it, time will be set aside at the beginning of the meeting. To me, beginning means at the very end for, uh, at the very beginning for public comment. It doesn't state at the end, so I'm interpreting at the beginning of the meeting. So, I think it's interpretation. The right interpretation is at the beginning of the meeting, people have the right to speak.
At this time, the non-public was at the beginning, beginning of the meeting. We just moved, we just asked to move it, but at the time, which then we now need to readdress this policy if you're going to move it, but at the moment, non-public's always been at the beginning. So, I believe the address, perhaps it was done incorrectly, Ralph. There will be time set aside at the beginning of the meeting and prior to starting the non-public. We moved the non-public from the beginning to the end.
Ralph and Jen attended the school board meeting.
Well, we can do, actually, we can do a board vote, vote, board vote.
So, you're gonna change the policy without actually bringing it to the-
I think we're probably doing the policy correctly. I don't think we're changing it. Do you guys agree? I mean, Sandy felt it was the beginning. Jen?
I'm going to read it again. I'm sorry, this isn't DVD.
B E D H, number one.
It's interpretation of the word and-
At the beginning of the meeting and prior to starting non-public session.
That's it, that's the argument.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the meeting, prior to non-public, be set aside time for public comment. I don't know how you-
We have historically allowed two sections of our agenda for public comment.
Well, I think we have, we have talked previously about not necessarily following other precedents that we have now deemed to be inappropriate.
If you review minutes since I've rejoined the ba- uh, band here.
Sandy?
Um, we're regressing, in my opinion, right now. Uh, we were saying we weren't going to start saying what has happened in the past, we're gonna be moving forward, and we're moving to the past. We're not dealing with the way things are stated right now.
Okay, all righty, um-
Point of order.
Ralph?
Currently, we're following policies and procedures, right?
We're fine.
Okay. So, currently, we all discussed, one of the first meetings I came back to the board here, we discussed the idea of keeping two public comment sections, and we all agreed. It was a good idea, because maybe on one part of the, the public comment was to address agenda items, and the other part of the public comment was to address things that we hadn't thought about and take advice, or take, maybe, so, we as members of the same board, at the same time, currently, current events, I guess you could say, we've discussed this, and we've said, Bob was in, but maybe Bob needs to attend to clarify what was discussed, or we could review our minutes. We're allowing two parts of the agenda for public comment. We cannot have a situation where somebody doesn't want somebody else to be heard, because again, that's showing the public huge disregard for what concerns them.
Okay, thank you. Sandy?
Hi. We talk about following procedure. Uh, yes, we've been having, and I know we've had it for many years, a public comment at the beginning and at the end. However, by reading this, we have not been following procedure, so if we wish to change but go back and have that, then we need to have, take this under advisement by the Policy Committee to bring, bring it back to us accordingly and have a decision.
You're just showing, you're just showing everybody what this board can do, that's all. We either, we either respect the public, or we don't.
But you're saying we have to do, if I, I, I'm confused, Ralph. Explain to me how you want to go by the books. I have this, um, policy in front of me, and the first thing it says, time will set aside at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, so, so, apparently, all these years, we have been not following our rule. Um, I'm not saying it's a right rule, uh, but if this is the case, we want to follow the rule, then this poli- and, and there's a, a, a discrepancy with some people about having two or having one, that maybe we need to, um, revisit this and rewrite it. That's all I'm saying.
The, the last meeting was not conducive to, um, one of the things that the board members are responsible for is putting children first and putting the district first, and, um, that has not been conducive, uh, to a good meeting, and, um, I'd like to make a nomination to adjourn.
I'm the second.
Second.
I don't know who adjourned, I can't vote for them.
Adjourn the meeting.
You mean a motion?
Unless you'd like to take, I mean, basically, um, we'd like to follow policy.
But you're not doing it. It's black and white.
Uh, we, 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 at the time will be set aside at the beginning of the meeting and prior to starting non-public, which is at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know how much clearer that can be.
Until you look, stop to look at all of the other agendas. I, I can't-
You know, if we don't protect, the, the meeting wasn't, wasn't, wasn't going well, isn't conducive to having somebody say, yeah, I think I'll put my name in the hat for a school board. You can't just, the, the school board cannot just be allowed to be beaten up, because that's what you feel like doing, and I think this is a move to, um, to not allow the school board to be treated so horribly. Sandy?
Um, at this point, I don't think we're getting anywhere. I think at this point, we need to agree to disagree. We need to have this policy, in my opinion, looked at by the Policy Committee, with school board members giving their input, and then be brought back to us for a decision of what we wanna do with this policy.
And until that point, you'll violate policy and procedure.
Um, okay. What would you like me-
Well, no, we have to have-
I think you should allow the public to comment one more time in the meeting.
Wait a second. First of all, one of the things I think of is, I already know it's gonna be, um, a barrage of insults to the school board, which has already been done, and I won't allow it to be repeated, or the administration. Um, I don't see that it's helpful. I don't see that we learn anything. I would be thrilled if, you know, everybody asked to have the move, meeting moved later so that people show up. These guys waited until they couldn't wait to get out of here any longer. It isn't, they aren't gonna show up. They aren't gonna be here. And, um, you want me to, um, decide to give Steve three minutes to tell us how horrible we are again? Is that really what you want me to do? That's what I'm stopping. But, uh, you may as well call them, take the elephant in the room here, because I'm, that is what you're asking us to do, and I think we've ha- I think this board has been, that has been done to this board enough, and I, I won't tolerate it. Jen?
I think that we either need to decide to follow that policy or not follow that policy, but I don't think not allowing someone to speak is a reason to, whether to follow or not follow that policy.
No.
As much as I don't like being attacked and have somebody work themselves up into a tether by speaking, I don't think it's our choice to whether he, or not he does that in public or not. I think whether, whatever we think someone's going to say doesn't give us a right to change the meeting, but if the policy is the policy, and we're going to follow the policy, then that's what we do. That's what we need to vote on, not what someone's going to say.
Actually, that is why you have the policy, is I decided to investigate, 'cause I like to do my research, what is our policy? And, this is what I found. I shared it with you. I read it, it says, set aside at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay. Ralph?
Yeah. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Thus, questions may be directed to individual board members, but answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board, which is another way of saying, not really your individual call on this issue. The policy's been drafted, the policy's been adopted, the policy's in effect. So, you as an individual are deciding to go adverse to the policy. I'm gonna say this one more time.
I, I read it. I, I read it fifty times.
It's obvious what you want to do and what you don't want to do, but you don't have the authority to change policy or procedure on a whim.
It is not, it is by far not a whim.
It's a whim.
It was basically, what, are we following policy? And I walked in and got the policy. There was no whim. It, it's, um, let's get it right. It, it, ask anybody. That's all I ever wanna do. If there are, if it says you must have one at the beginning and one at the end, we would be having one.
Can I weigh in?
Yeah.
Sure.
Certainly seems like this, it's gray. Um, the practice that we've had has been to have, uh, public comment beginning at the end. You know, I, I won't say that in the past, we've had non-public at times at the end. Uh, I, I certainly think the policy needs to be clarified further, uh, because again, the way I interpret it, is it at the beginning, or is it at the end? Is it before non-public? Is it when non-public was at the end? Um, but it certainly needs better clarification.
It boils down with the word and, to me, 'cause I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, that's the gray area.
I think, uh, so, I think that when I came on the school board, we had, we had public comment at the beginning and at the end. One of them, at the end, the end was, let's see, one of them was about speaking, about what was on the agenda. The first one was, you could speak only about what was on the agenda. The second one was, you could say whatever you wanted, in theory, you know, basically, and- and we would not respond to questions. I think part of looking at this, I understand that we're public and that people have the right to free speech, but I think we also ought to look at, the policy committee ought to look at the, how people speak and what they, what really they can say in a, in a public meeting. And I think that, I don't think it's fair to have a meeting interrupted when we're talking about something else by somebody off of the board feeding you information and I would like to know if there's a policy about that, because that puts everybody else at a disadvantage. So I think we need to clarify the policies about public speaking at school board meetings. We need to see what they are, see what the RSA's are that apply to them and follow them specifically and tonight go by the policy as we're reading it. Maybe we can vote how we're reading that.
Ralph?
I don't understand what the interpretation of the word and is. Does anybody have a definition for the word and?
It conjoins two subjects.
Okay. So if there's two subjects, does that mean one time? It's all, you know, I mean, again...
The time, time will be set aside at the beginning of the meeting and prior to starting of non-public, which is at the beginning of the meeting for public comment visitors.
Set aside the time and it was prior to, and at the beginning of the meeting. Those are the ands, that's the and, it joins those two things. It must be at the beginning of the meeting and prior to the non-public. So that works.
But, but you just injected the words at the, non-public at the beginning of the meeting. You're injecting words into a policy that don't exist. The words are not in there.
Sandy?
You're going to convince me that this is another, another attempt by the school board...
Yes.
...to subvert the interests of the public.
A motion is maybe to move?
Um, so, motion is, it's kind of frustrating. Does anybody remember?
Does they have a motion?
A motion, we don't have a motion. A motion to accept the interpretation of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sandy.
It's what we continue discussion, I think when you move a motion.
What was the last motion?
Just let the public speak.
What is it?
Let the public speak. Just say you don't want to hear from Mr. Brown, we can call the meeting to adjourn. That's what, that's basically all it boils down to.
Ralph, you are, you are asking us, I'm not going to hear, but you are asking us follow policy and they pulled out a policy.
What's the word and?
And, before, before and, it's both, it covers it.
What do you guys want to do?
I think that you need to be careful about, I see, I agree with most of what you're trying to do, but I think you need to be careful, the reasons you're using to do this. I think that you're not necessarily letting Ralph speak when you don't like what he says and I don't think that's fair.
Ralph, every time you raise his hand, I'm holding.
I just don't think it's fair. I think that we need to adopt some policies and keep with them and Ralph is a proponent of going by the book and you've got the book right there and I think we need to vote what we, what we think that says. But I think we need to be careful about stopping somebody when you don't like what they're saying.
I, I feel like this, this conversation has been going on for at least 20 minutes now. We're not getting anywhere. We're all interpreting different, differently. Since there seems to be some contention on this, I'd like to see it be brought to the policy committee to be looked at by a lawyer, if possible.
That's going to cost money.
I know. Well, we can, we can use the New Hampshire School Board Association to see what their interpretation is of it, but I don't think that we're going to be getting anywhere tonight. For me, reading it, I'll state it again, I'll say it again, number one says the time was set aside at the beginning of the meeting. I know we've always done it to, maybe we've been out of, you know, apparently we haven't been following, you know, procedure, but we have that. So I would like us to just think about it and come back next meeting and maybe make a decision.
Um, actually, I'm going to make a motion to allow Steve Brown to speak for three minutes.
I second it.
And I also would like the support of the board that we expect it to be civil and it's not to be directed and not personal. Those are also in the policies.
And no comments will be made by any of us.
Uh, public, and also it'll be kept to three minutes, so the timer will start.
I'm in favor of the motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comment, timer started.
Yeah, as far as the, the public comment was, when we did that back then, we always did non-public at the end and that's why it's worded that way, and after non-public. As far as climate and culture and school goes, we've been talking about that exact same thing since back in the day and what I didn't hear in discussion is a lot of the problems with the climate and culture start with the administrators and the staff. In last meeting, the board came out with a chart that had Wakefield 10th from the bottom at teacher's pay.
Starting teachers.
That, well, I checked it and Wakefield came out at 58 and there were two more, two to three more districts that were in $100. So, no, I don't think it was, it was teachers' pay and I don't know why. The problem is with you people, you don't have your, you're not your facts and figures straight. I mean, it looks like you're lying and anybody who goes to talk, there's the arms. I mean, it's like, how ignorant are all of you? And you've all, yeah, you're laughing, Jen. You do, you do it all the time. How many people have you raised your hand to while they're talking? Oh, he said something or she said something I don't like, I got to raise my arms and I got to interrupt them. I mean, it's this board is the problem. Not, not, you know, someone else. It's this board.
One minute to go.
You people are the problem.
Thank you for sharing that. One minute to go.
No, I'm done. I just, the climate and culture has a lot to do with the administrators and the staff and the building.
All righty, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.